There you go. Good tap. All right. Call the meeting back to order. We're back from closed session. Mr. Treck, can you give us a report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. No reportable action to council during closed session. Directions given staff.
We had the pledge of allegiance earlier. We're up to adoption of agenda. I hear any motions to adopt the agenda?
All motion.
In a second. Call roll real quick.
Here. Yes.
Yes.
He says yes.
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 All right.
Yes.
Yes. Right here. What are we doing?
Adoption of agenda.
Oh, I thought everybody was sitting over here.
Okay, we're all here. Oh. If anyone would like to speak, there's some blue cards over there to talk for your three minutes as we move into the agenda.
Who do we give those blue cards to?
Right here. Kayla. Yep. So fill one out and we'll get back to you for public comment. Do we have any cards now, Kayla?
We do now.
We do now. All right.
That's right. Let's do it right now before you do it in a regular bit.
Ed?
It's okay.
Come up to the press.
You've got your podium up there, so.
We heard we'd have a bigger audience today. I have nothing officially prepared for part of the Orville Bachi Group, our club we're putting together, and we're going to have some bachi courts out here in the cities. We had their blessing. We've had the golf course blessing to put them in. Now we're looking for money. And last week we addressed the city council the other day and they're working on that. And we just wanted to show again that we're serious about this. We're ready to go. Came ahead since we work on a 501(c)(3) type nonprofit and we're in process of doing that right now. So we had a committee we put together. So we're ready to go. We're just looking for money and help. All of those. So thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Ed.
And a bigger forum today. Thank you.
All right.
Next we have Janice White, followed by Dorinda Scopiel.
Hi, I'm Janice White and I've been to four the city council a number of times and out here and spoke with the golf board also. We're, like Ed said, we're working on our 501(c)(3) to get our bachi club initiated, Orville Bachi Club. And thought we'd come out and just let us know, let you know that we're working on everything and any help, any suggestions that you may have to help us further to get this thing really rolling. I have so many people interested. I have up to nine. In fact, I just got like six or eight people this morning. So I've got over 91 people that are, that want to see this happen out here. And so if anyone has any help or any suggestions, please pass it on to us. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I have a question. I have a follow-up question for you. Out of those 91 people, are they, is it, is this dominated by people that are elderly? Like a?
No.
They're younger too?
No. No, not at all. Not at all.
So what is the definition of elderly?
Sorry, CHP.
I was just wondering. I'm processing and thinking. Yeah.
I have young people that I play with. I'm a bitter old right now. I'm trying to be the course. Play pickleball and I am pounding me on the time. What is this going to get done? And they're probably maybe, some are probably younger than 40.
And what is the amount they ask again?
I got, I just, I think I counted. I think I've got 93 people.
No, no, how much? How much?
The dollar amount? It was Johnny Smith brought in plans, which I know I presented it to the, actually he presented them. And then I made copies and Eric Smith, as I said, and the estimated cost for the court itself is about, about $22,500. And the covering we've gotten a bid on for around $35,000. But these are 80 by 12 courts and self-maintained. So there's no maintenance that one has to worry about or golf or anyone else has to worry about. And it's all good.
I have a question. Do you guys have any plans of fundraising for any of this yourselves or?
We, yes, actually, we've had the Eagles Club downtown offered when we get our, everything goes through on the 501(c)(3). They had talked about doing a fundraiser for us. Chico Bachi, who really wants to help us out and actually they get done. They want to come over and do tournaments and what have you. People in the Pan Valley that I've talked to that have courts out at Gateway Park, they want to participate. So, and I have friends that used to belong, when we had Purple Line downtown, they come from big, big league bigs. There's a lot of people. So I mean, the proximity, the location of this is, I said from the beginning, it's a no-brainer. Really is. And one of their facilities.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
And Dorinda now? Welcome, Dorinda.
My name is Dorinda Scopiel. I'm just a member of the community and if you don't mind, I'd just like to pray over you first. Father God, thank you, Lord, for all these people, Lord, that stepped forward, Lord, to your community first. So, Lord, I just pray a blessing over them, Lord. I pray for grace, Lord, for, Lord, I know they come against some hard conflicts and different ideas, Lord. So I just pray that you fill them with grace, Lord, for one another, Lord, as they make these decisions, Lord. In your precious and holy name, I pray. What I come forward is I just feel that when I look at our town, I hate, I hate going down our dams. It is the ugliest street. There's no more trees anymore. And I think, I think you got to create that beauty in our community and stuff. And I think once we create that community environment where things look nice and stuff, I think people are going to start coming back around and wanting to pick up trash and caring about our city again. But, but, but I mean, no one takes care of the landscaping, it seems like anymore and stuff. And, you know, I think we just, I don't know if any of you have ever been to a communist country or a country that was ever communist and is free again. But that's one of the things that they use. I mean, everything looks ugly. Everything is gray. Everything is, and they start to just deteriorate who you are and make you depressed. And that's kind of how I feel about when I go down our dam. And our dam's our main piece. But I'm not just talking about that. I would hope that somehow we could encourage the businesses and them to get a little bit better about the landscaping and stuff. And if there's some way we can create some kind of community of picking up trash and making it our city again, you know? I mean, we're all here because we love it or we live somewhere else. But anyways, if you can do that, I would just think that would be really great to just create that mind again. But we all want to be proud and live here. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dorinda, come and see me when, after the meeting or call me up. You got my number. Call me.
Right.
Because I got, I got a lot of opportunities for volunteers to work.
Anyone else? Is that it? That's all? Okay. Just a brief comment to Dorinda's last comment. As we did have a meeting with Caltrans yesterday. And one of the topics we had with Caltrans was beautiful. And Councilman Weber brought it up and he's got some fair information we'll share in the near future about that.
Yeah.
All right. Let's move into the regular business action. All right. Mr. Ring.
All right, thank you. So this is some housekeeping items. What I'll do, I think now is I'll kick it off for about five, 10 minutes. And then we'll, what we can do is we can grab food, then come back. And then each department head will kind of present some of their accomplishments from the year and some of the goals and objectives that they are recommending for next fiscal year. And at the end, we'll look at a summary of all these and certainly receive input from all you folks as right now the budget's being made. So I'll say right now, resources are, that the needs and the wants from the departments will way exceed obviously the resources that are. I mean, I think talking about roads, talking about the capital improvement plan that we, that Alyssa presented, the project list recently. I don't, I don't think that comes any surprise, but certainly the wants are going to exceed what the resources are. So we want to get priorities from you folks on how we allocate the resources that we do have. So, but first let's go ahead and I'll kick it off really quick. So again, it's goals and priority workshop. I don't have a clicker. Does everyone have a clicker?
Huh? Oh.
Yeah.
Next slide.
Sorry. Each department has its own thoughts of the lecterns. We can have it a little.
Go to the lectern? Yep.
All right. All right. So I'll, I'll give a quick overview and primarily I'll talk about what the budget was this past year and the high level accomplishments the city has made. Then each department will give an update. Ruth can talk about the admin and finance and HR and some updates from that department. Amy will talk about her department. We'll have Ron, code enforcement, town and community development, G10s, On Fire, Chief Wines on Police. And then Alyssa will talk about the massive list of public works that we use that we're working on. Again, this is the overview. I'm going to give an update on the refresher on what we did for 2425. And we'll get into the other meat and potatoes here. But ultimately for 2425, just to give everyone a refresher on what we're up for the budget this, this year. I'm sorry the glare is horrible. But the city has very, very held on for $9 million reserve, has not been touched. I know there has been rumors periodically that the reserve that the city has established was depleted or tapped into. It has not been tapped into.
No.
This past, this year, over $5 million was actually budgeted in roadwork, which is great news. Obviously, it's a big expense, right? So it's hard to see the money go, but also it's great to see the money go in the projects the city needs. So a lot of work done this year, the Highway 162 project. And I can call Alyssa. There she is back there. I think she sent an update last night. It's going to be done this week. At least the city portion of that. And then as the mayor mentioned, we met with Caltrans yesterday. They are just reaching a final agreement with the railroad on a, basically an agreement that's going to allow them to do their part of the project. It's going to go out to bid here real soon, but that's very likely going to start next spring at the latest. That's what we were saying. And in the meantime, they did, the council pushed really hard on, okay, there's a couple areas on the road that aren't going to make it until spring. So can you do some work for us on that? At least some Band-Aids to keep the, the road intact until next spring. And they, they committed to doing that. So we're going to send them some pictures of our biggest hit list for 162. At least get some Band-Aids on that because obviously it makes sense. They don't want to invest a ton of money into these roads when they're going to rip them up next spring. But they do have to, they do have to survive another winter. So, but the 162 project, that's been a project that's been in the works for the city since 2015, 2016. So seeing that finish, that sidewalk come in will really help. I think that corridor will be great once the road is done. Yes.
For our viewer audience, tell them, the scope of the work is not just a grind and overlay. It's a complete rebuild too.
Yeah.
Like, so, I mean, when they're going to do it all the way from the river through town to Foothill Boulevard.
But it's, I don't, I don't believe it. I don't believe it's a grinder place.
It's an overlay.
But it isn't, but it's going to go down.
But then we're talking about it yesterday. We're talking about rehab, taking it all the way down?
I think some sections are going to need some rehab work, but for the most part, I mean, a lot of the road is, I mean, there are sections that are absolutely horrible. We all know that. But there are some sections that are in pretty good shape. So I think most of it's a maintenance project, but there are going to be some spots. I mean, the corridor, the corner of Feder River and 162, I think that's the one I drive over every day multiple, a couple of times. And it is, it is bad.
I think to add to your shot, the basic thing we found out yesterday is the $35 million for the project is secure.
Yes.
Have to worry about the state raiding. That's, that's.
And it's not going to be, I think there were some concerns raised at the actions at the federal government level. It's not going to impact this project. So it's, it is secure as a project can be.
And Dorinda, to your point, we did raise that as, as a potential issue in the future because we wanted, we wanted some beautification elements, maybe some planters down the middle and how we could get there. So Alyssa, and then we're going to talk about how that can happen in the future. But we definitely want, you know, we want to add that beautification element, those trees in the middle wherever we can to make it more appealing for sure. So we just had that conversation last week.
Yeah. Nelson Avenue and Highway 70 off ramp, that had been a project that was in dire need for, gosh, I, for me, at least three or four years, probably longer than that. But that was the time this year I was completed. The Montgomery Myers Slurry, which is done, which I think can be striking there. It really looks nice for the downtown area. Over Road is going to get started this summer. I think it starts at least in May. Yes. Montgomery Roundabout, we were hoping to get that done this year, but you know, there's, there's only so many hours a day. It's going to happen, I believe, next, it's going to be.
This calendar year.
This, this calendar year, but next, but next fiscal year. Engineer design work on Table Mountain, Washington. And that's, that's a big quarter project we talked about a lot. And we were very fortunate, BCA provided the city with $2.5 million for design work and engineering work and environmental work. So I believe that probably, that's going up to, I keep looking in the list. Rewarding the contract, I think on Tuesday on that. So, yes, or a question?
Where is that on Montgomery?
The, the Roundabout?
By Bossburger.
Yeah.
Oh, they're going to do something different than that?
It's just, it needs, it's, if you look at it close, it's deteriorating really bad. It's, it needs to be redone, repaired. Yes?
What, I heard you mention Over Road. What do you, what are your plans there?
It is, it's, it's one mile of road and it's city-owned, county-owned, but ultimately it was destroyed for all the trucks during the camp, the debris removal. So it's, it's a repair job for Over Road. If you drive on it now, it's in really bad shape.
So there's no changes of Lincoln, from Lincoln to Upper Flair Mall?
That's the county portion.
Housing development is going?
I'm not aware of any.
Why don't you tell them what the city knows, where your, where your mile is?
I, I, I find it what happened at my fingertips, but if I can get that to you, I'd have to share it with you.
Does she know what mile you own?
No, let me, let me just get through it and I'll touch, I'll, I'm happy to share that with you.
Yeah.
Okay. And we had over $500,000 in additional resources that were budgeted. A lot was, it was pushed towards mastic and other repairs. There's been more roadwork done this year, I think, than all previous years. And I know, I think I'm anticipating that to continue to be a priority of this council. Other things, in the 2425 year, implemented the first year of the citywide compensation study. Again, it doesn't seem like a big deal, but it certainly was and it's a cost. But it's, obviously it's set the position, the city had been in a position where we're much more competitive with compensation to be able to attract and retain great staff. A funding for over $1 million in capital asset needs, that was in the budget. And then we also had $500,000 put into the fund for future needs. So there was, obviously there was budget, there was enough resources in this year's budget to fund the requests by departments, but then also to sock some away for the future. Also, the corp yard was included in the budget this year, which again, that's going to be, you're going to be seeing an item on Tuesday for that. Hewitt Park, there was an item on that recently for the construction. Funding for the, the lot home, that work is happening now. The federal and state lobbyists, we got those folks on board to help us. Really hope that, I think we're, this is coming more and more clear to me, we're going to really have to lean on them to try to get as much funding as we can. And other tools that will help the city, the payment management program, the PMP, the CMMS, which is the maintenance management software and the 311 tool. All those are great tools that the city hasn't had that were in the budget that are in the process of being, rolling out. Very, very actively rolling them out right now, so they should be on the streets here real soon. All right. So for 2526, there are, as you'll see, there's going to, there are, there's a significant wish list. And I always tell the department heads, I say, you know what? If you don't ever ask for it, you're never going to receive it. So certainly put it on the list. That way it can be prioritized. And ultimately, if it's not included in this year's budget because of the resources, you know, we have it to look at in the future. But certainly if you have a need, if you don't put it down, it's never going to be talked about. But there are some things this year that we have to absorb, right? That we have no choice. You know, we have, and I've said it a couple of times, not to pick on our fire contract, the Calfire contract is going to go up. And that was again, as a result of the 66-hour work week. We've been talking about that. We baked it into this year's budget, but this year we had about seven months of it. Next year, we're going to have a full 12 months of it. So that's going to be about roughly, I think about a $500,000 increase. And then we've been fortunate because we had the CalPSC grant for so many years. That's going to be winding down. So that's going to be revenue that we didn't have, about 1.3 million, I believe, that we're not going to have going forward. So those two things alone, 1.8-ish million dollars is just, it's the reality that we're in right now. And we don't see a whole lot that we're going to, those are hits that we have to absorb into the budget. The measure U dollars are, is fantastic, but it's roughly 7, 7.5 million, I believe. I'm looking at Ruth, she's giving me any district tax?
It's probably 7.2.
Okay. 7.2. It, it hasn't been growing. It's been actually declining just a touch. So, you know, 2 million, roughly a $2 million hit on a $7 million district tax. And that, that's a lot. That's a lot to absorb. And as I mentioned, budgets requests are exceeding the available resources. So we're looking today just to make sure we understand what the council's priorities are as we worked collaboratively on this budget. We want to try to make sure we incorporate what the wishes of the council are and we'll bring that back to the council in June. So that's kind of the goals for today. So why don't we? It's not working. Why don't you want to click it?
All right.
That's all right. Did that? All right. Why don't we do this? Why don't we spray, yeah, everyone gets some food real quick and then we'll, we'll take it and people, people, and we have about, we're trying to get through it in an hour, hour and a half.
Here's.
Here?
Yeah.
No, I know, but. Good break.
I know, I just want to make. Doesn't work. You can see that? That's a pretty.
I don't get uploaded. Yes, I'm glad I'm uploaded. It looks like I was.
Where it's going.
Where it's going.
Yeah, right. Another alley.
And that's why it really crashed.
Oh, yeah. Many.
It's been going.
I'm dying, man. I did so much level of struggle today. It's kind of.
It's very. It's letter case.
Do you have a plan? People. Yeah.
It's a morning. Yeah, I get some chat. But maybe make this call.
Does it isolate that issue or is there other?
There was another. Okay, I understand. 12542. Oh, wait a minute. That's, that's your. That's the number I thought that you.
Where you can.
Yeah, whatever. I feel you. Okay, I appreciate it. Interesting. High potential, putting trees along our damn boulevard and. Something in the contract.
So they, oh, really? They didn't have it in the beautification section of it? They didn't?
No, it just comes with, and they're still sold. Why, why do you have that stuff? The director says that we can ask for a zero cost. Uh, I think. That's all we'll do. Which is kind of an accident. You know, right now, the water car gets around, irrigate streams. It's all. So it's kind of a good possibility.
Yeah. The doctor, that would have been part of that, that was contract.
It all started back in 2015, so I wouldn't believe it's complicated. It makes sense. But if you can ever, right now that. We wrote the contract today, yes. It's going to be very hard to save. We're going to, we're going to be troubled this year. But instead of. You get 1%. If that, if that, you know, I can help.
All we have is that weight. We want infrastructure, it's released. Now let's make everybody. Bring your bags, bring your bags, bring this, you know?
Hope you can, you know.
Meeting, when, talking about on agenda, you're involved in part of the bar.
I know. Best ones were there. So we see them.
I saw, I'll probably. Not, not that it's terrible.
And you can buy from, I think it's, I can't remember what place, the bucket, a bucket of cookie mix. Use make a bunch of cookies for little plates. I can, I can. See money, money, money.
I'm going to give you this now. Good. And how's your beautiful? Still place. Find my sleep sack, so, because you're like awesome, sleep sack. Okay, what is this?
We have two girls getting ready to leave to YWAM. YWAM? It's a, it's a program used with a mission. Got. But they're going to be.
You sign.
Yeah, it's, it's a big, pretty big organization.
Go out at night in that area?
Are you faster with no?
Dam. And they have a light show and then parking lot and some.
Well, he's got a lot of properties over there.
All the known things and other than the not known things, we just did it later. Two, three percent, whatever we thought was reasonable. And we put it in the budget so that when departments are going in their budgets right now and they're looking, we're asking them to do five years, not one year, we're asking them to do five years so that we can present that to you. So I have that scheduled for the second meeting in June, the first meeting in June, you'll be getting the twenty six, twenty, the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. And then the next meeting in June, we're going to have our consultants jump in and do, hey, what does this look like for five years? We need to do a fiscal sustainability discussion. So really looking forward to that because no matter what I say, it's really nice to have a visual so that you're all seeing what I see and you're all working towards the same, the same challenge. Working on our city website, I have staff working on that, happy to say my cabinet is working on that. I don't know what to do there. Capital Asset Replacement Fund, we just finished or updated something I started several years ago. We didn't have any money to fund it, but now we've been putting away money so that we can replace the assets that we have in the future. In these last few years since we got the District Tax Fund, the one percent, we have been just buying stuff that has been diverted for so long. But now we're actually able to start a reserve and put money away for these cards that are going to either be replaced again. So that's really cool. I think Ryan put this last one, going to identify solutions in cities of the cities. I know rules keep coming up, so we're just going to keep working on that. Putting together a capital improvement plan, and Alyssa got us started off, but we actually need to take that list. So we actually need to say, this is what we think we could have this year, this is what we think we could do this year. How much of this is potentially can be funded with a grant? So there's still a lot more work to do. Now that it's been estimated and prioritized, there's still another step we need to do to actually make a plan, strategy on how to address. I don't need anything.
What, what quick that Ruth, just to ask, I know other boards I sit on the scoreboard and then Lopad and others have gone to a different banking institution that are, that are more in tune to government operations. What's your status with, what, I don't even know.
Services, I think I mentioned that we were going to do an RFP, but we've decided to scale that back. So we've, staff has given me a list of all the banks in Orville. We'll be able to bank locally and I'm writing an informal bid letter, asking them to give us a bid. And hopefully I'll get more than three replies and then I can bring that to you with a committee selection.
And I don't know, you've had a lot of problems, but I know in particular Score had humongous problems with the banks, other checks being written on their account and then the, the solution was to close the account. But then the work that came back to Score was huge because they had to go back and redo every check written and, and it's, it's, the bank was not very responsive to helping out with that. I know they moved to another bank that was very helpful, so.
I haven't had any problems like that, other than I don't have a local base. I think the one I'm talking to are in Sacramento, never met him. We did have that fraud attempt a couple of weeks ago. It came to be four checks and it came to like thirty-five thousand dollars, but we're going to, we get it back. We're not having any losses from it, but I, I don't have a local base, I don't have a local person that's helping me with that. But we're going to take more stringent measures to make sure that doesn't happen again. We're going to implement positive pay, so the bank will need to look at checks that are a risk that we gave them.
Yeah, I, I know there've been a lot of solutions that have gone and I know in particular Score's case was huge. The scary thing is the checks that were written were actually the next record in their checkbook that they hadn't written yet.
It's almost like it was inside jobs.
They were used to ones that we had already written checks.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah, and they, first they told me you need to submit these as altered checks. So I did what they said and I submitted everything and they have a note in July and like, I'm back again because they said, no, actually they're not our.
Altered checks, right.
So we do all my numbers.
It just seems like governance is a target for this kind of activity. It just makes a lot of extra work.
We do a lot of training in-house. I think the number one thing they said at my last conference is that a vendor, they'll send in and say, hey, here's our new, we changed bank accounts, here's, you know, sent our money E C H to here. And so staff has been trained to not do any changes without calling the company. We just do not, you know, you call over every, even I had one yesterday, they wanted to change the address of their center check. So I went straight to the staff, she told me, no, I called and she had the whole story. So they're doing their work to make sure that we don't have those kind of losses. I, I don't want that to ever happen on my watch.
Thank you.
We felt, we felt like having a local person, as Ruth mentioned a couple of times, would be helpful. That's what we decided is to be informal, but let all local banks, and some of them obviously are, have, they're more than local banks, but some of them are just local banks, but give them all its hands, but ultimately having the, they're all going to provide similar, I guess, benefits by having a local resource for better customer service. We felt like was the biggest priority.
Number one, to top things, not one. I don't, we don't pay bankers. We don't even have an accountant or charge accounts for bank charges, so they can't charge us bank charges.
No account, no chart.
Number two is just having an easy to use website. Those are the two main things that I'm looking for. There's more things, but the two things I'm.
Well, I'm glad to hear the staff looking for it.
Yeah.
We appreciate you.
We do, I myself. Who's up next? Oh, Amy.
Before I get started, one of the things I've been asking leadership is I feel like my department's title should be changed. And so if you guys have any suggestions, that would be great. Because we don't do a lot of business assistance, we don't have an underwriter right now, we don't have funding for business assistance. Pat kind of does a little bit of the economic development. So I feel like business assistance is not really representing.
What would you have it be called?
I don't know, that's why I'm asking.
Amy's Office.
What's your suggestion?
It can't be repeated in public.
I'm fine if it's simply housing or I'm fine if it's something else.
Housing and, what was it, Housing and Neighborhoods Sport or Neighborhood Services? Because.
Housing and Neighborhoods.
Housing and Neighborhoods Sport, I like that.
Yeah.
Followed by Best Department Ever in the History of Departments.
Department of Orville Efficiency.
We can acronym or something.
Yeah, Department.
Department of We Get Everything Done. No, we've got all the, we've got all the best departments.
There you go.
Housing Assistance.
So for business this year, we secured over five million dollars in grant unit funding and we're pending the three point six million. I did announce to you guys that we received a conditional approval for all three of the grants. I resubmitted them, one of them yesterday, the other one last week, so all of them were resubmitted. So I'm hoping that we'll hear something this month, but they did put it in the note, but a May announcement. But the, the areas where they asked for further clarification were really simple and really easy to fix, especially the fire engine. I only had to change firefighting equipment or fire equipment to emergency rescue equipment. That was the only thing I had to change. So I'm feeling pretty confident, ninety-nine percent confident that we will have an award for both a new truck and a new engine.
That's huge.
There still is an embargo on that, so we can't make a public announcement until the state gives us the green light to do that, but we can get that here. We also funded five hundred thousand dollars in new first time homebuyer loans. It's been pretty difficult in the last several months to do loans. We don't have a lot of housing stuff, the insurance rates, the interest rates, all of these things are making it hard for first time homebuyers, but we've still managed to do five hundred thousand, so we're, we're good with that. And we also did three hundred and eighty-two first time homebuyer loan funds for the county because we are administering their program as well. The difference with their program is that they can purchase anywhere in the county other than Paradise. And they, we've expended all the funds for them and they are asking to move some funding from a different grant that they aren't able to do this one. So we might be coming back with the extension on that M O U. We haven't, this fiscal year done much, we have, we've done about fifteen thousand dollars worth. She has several applications in that she's reviewing. I think she's gotten fifteen in this fiscal year and not all of them are falling in where things need to be. But also we have several that are going to be high dollar ones if we, if we approve them because some of them look like they might be to be rebuilt. And we're not sure if we want to do. The Orville Convention Center was completed, that was a partnership with Community Development. We got the money, they did the work, but we're done with that project. And then Lincoln Street Village Apartment Phase One. And then we also received one point seven million dollars in payoffs. Some of the continued initiatives are, we're working on Lincoln Street Phase Two. We are having weekly closing meetings now where we're meeting with equity partners, lenders, legal, state, and we're trying to get all the documentation to close. And this is always a really stressful time for these type of loans, there's so much that goes into it. The City of Orville actually is going to have three loans into this, so we're trying to finalize documentation. One of them will be coming, the first meeting in May to talk to you about. They were awarded a twenty twenty D R grant that the city is going to be a partner owner of. And the way that it looks like it's going to be structured is that the state is going to loan the city money and the city is going to loan the developer money with the same, the same conditions. And then we'll have indemnity from anything from it. So we're still working on all the legal documentation. The state has documents that they haven't provided with us, so it's going to be like, it's a bluff, right Dave?
Especially since the deadline's supposed to be tomorrow.
So yeah, the deadline, we have to close all of this by May fourteenth to hit the tax credit closing date in order to get funded. So we are all a little bit stressed, but it'll work out, it always does. Also Missionist Bronza, that is an ongoing operation that we hope to close by the end of April. We brought a little bit of a hiccup going right now in the temporary power that we were planning on was which is going to trench in a ditch to get, to get power for work until we get the final switch in June. The Department of Fish.
Wildlife.
Wildlife are looking at it and it might be another sixty to ninety days before they can decide if it's within their jurisdiction. If that is the case, we probably won't open until we get the final here because it's an extra expense that we just can't. That just came up last week, two weeks, two weeks ago. But everything is going along well there. One other thing is that they're still working on drainage by the A D A compliant units. We have, working with American Engineering and they're trying to figure out why it keeps doing, you know, getting water there. And then inside, they're about ready to put flooring in and all of the baseboards and then they'll start putting the beds and everything in.
So what I hear you saying is it'll be open before Orville Hospital?
Yes, for sure. Neighborhood Cleanup Program, which internally, I think Ron calls Clean Streets. We are nearing expending that completely down. So I do have a recommendation for our twenty twenty-five C D B G grant and that maybe we might want to consider refunding this project because it is the mean amazing work for our community, so.
Oh, yeah.
Not if you go on Facebook.
Rats and raves.
Me too.
People are bored for years.
And then I already discussed the U County's Cal Home Program. We also are still working with Veterans Housing Development, this has been a long process. But we did, we did give them the first tranche of the loan and for pre-development. So they've been working on getting the geotechnical engineering done, environmental work, re-updoing the site plan. We have somewhat across a couple of issues. I don't know how it happened, but we installed solar panels in the easement that we were, that we had done for their driveway. So we happen to figure out how we're going to handle that situation. And then also they've had to redesign the site plan because of the P G N E power poles that are on the site. And we're trying to, so we're trying to work around that as well. But every day I just got several emails today from them too, so we're moving forward on that. Montgomery Street, again, it's on pause until we can get further along the road on this Mitchell. And then also improved housing programs, we do have a, an approved housing element for compliance and we do do our annual reporting. We also, when we submit it, we say that we're going to have to do all these different things that are required by the state or the ongoing projects. And this is just a placeholder that we need to revisit that and make sure we're doing what we're doing that we said we were going to do. And I work with Pat's group to do that.
On that note, I might mention, if you want to find out if you don't have that housing element together, go down and talk to the city of Gridley right now.
They're not in compliance.
They're having big problems, huge problems because they didn't, so it's just an example of.
So new initiatives for twenty-five, twenty-six, really what I do is I just look for grant funding for all of them to either continue projects that we're already running or new projects. And it's with you guys telling me what your priorities are. And that is like the programs, which are first time homebuyer rehab, public services, but also infrastructure.
Yep.
The other thing is, is that we're struggling a little bit with, we're not really struggling, but we have a very archaic system. Like she said, we use Excel spreadsheets to track, you know, when, when our entrances, we have a loan, we're totally above three hundred people. And so we have to track all of their insurance monthly and we're doing it by Excel. And we're doing their certifications by Excel. And so what I'd like to do is have a system that will automatically alert us when those things are coming up every month. The, one of our funding sources is requiring that we do it on an annual basis from when the loan closed or within forty-five days of the beginning of the year, so we have to make changes anyway. Ruth is thinking that maybe one of her softwares that she has for leasing might work for us, so we're going to try to look into that this year. And then excited to try to implement the DocuSign policy in our department also.
Yeah.
And then I don't really have any new budget requests other than if we need software for tracking. And then also last year you guys were so kind as to support part of my salary with the Demerol Fund and I'm just asking for the same again this year.
Just, just a field suggestion, I like Orville Housing Services. And the reason I would put Orville in front of it so that it separates it, we have a problem with the Housing Agency of U County. It is a terrible topic, but it's Housing Authority, County of U. And it is extremely hard to convey that to anybody.
Well, I always say it wrong too because I want to say Housing Authority of U County.
And we're struggling with that right now, so something, there's really simple, Orville Housing Services, I like that.
O H S.
There you go. That's simple and does, it covers everything, you guys, we're good. We can see your baseball cap with O H S.
It'll be red.
Oh, it'll be red?
Go girl.
Thank you.
Just, we're seventeen slides through, we got about, ready to go.
Okay.
Just, just keeping.
I have about fifty slides.
We appreciate you, Amy.
Thank you, Amy, very good.
Talking about code enforcement, before we get too, too much into this, council, we're always thankful for your support. Colin Huber, you know, working with Dave Ritchie and.
Sam.
Sam Emerson is, I mean, we, we have gained leaps and bounds because of that support. It takes council support as well and, and I'd also like to thank all of the department heads that I work with. I get support from every department head here. It's code enforcement's a run by itself, you know, rely on Amy, Alyssa, a great deal. Public Works is, is very good to us. And so I'm always appreciative of our department heads in, in our departments. So some accomplishments for code enforcement, you know, we staff owned up thirteen hundred and fourteen cases the past year and closed twelve hundred and thirty-two cases. Our compliance rate still stays about ninety percent. It's, it's a good process, we follow what the state wants us to follow and follow the rules and, and reach out to people and make a lot of good things happen. Abated over two hundred abandoned cars from the city streets and property, that's down about a hundred vehicles, which is a good sign. We're still out there looking and it's nice to see that, that number falling, which means we're kind of getting caught up with people like to dump vehicles all over our city. Four hundred and fifty public maintenance cases, these are cases that, you know, dump trash and bring in front of houses. You know, vehicles in front of houses, construction left in front of houses, leftover concrete, anything imaginable. These are the type of stuff that is huge for us, this is our bread and butter too. So people drive down the road and see clean neighborhoods, clean streets, clean yards. And super important, we secured over seven hundred thousand dollars in grants from Cal Recycle, State Bill thirteen eighty-three, Cal Trans, this is a part of enforcement's efforts to beautify the city. And a lot of this goes with the work that I do with Jennifer Orvackel Consulting. Very good at, in the recycling position, being able to go out and nab that money. All of the new trash cans that you see downtown and then parking racks, parks, water fountains everywhere, that's all paid for. That, that didn't cost us anything, not the, not the infrastructure, not the grounds, any of that stuff. And, you know, it was close, a little over three hundred thousand dollars to get that all implemented. And that's all mandates under State Bill thirteen eighty-three, didn't cost us a penny. And, and I appreciate Jennifer and the hard work she does researching grants. Demolished five hazardous structures and recovered the cost for each project. We have, we have, over the last three years, we're the three year, which is, three years is really weird for a department. And I've developed several departments in, in my career. Three years is kind of a turning point to see, kind of look back and see what you've learned and the mistakes that you made and how you're going to correct those in year four. And it's very important to pay attention to that, but we have demolished close to nineteen properties in the city limits of Orville that were having this, people squatted them in, using drugs, catching them on fire, whatever the case may be. And we've paid back for every one of those, all the cost recovery, the cost of an excavator, our labor, our vehicle use, our tractor use, whatever it is, we've been paid back for all of those properties and that is.
Is that by property owners?
By property owners and banks. We underwent some, some really good training on how we track down, these banks like to swap properties back and forth. There'll be one corporation owns multiple banks and they'll hide these properties and we're able to get proper notice and identify, you know, who owns the property and who can get ahold of, and we can threaten them with Colin Huber to get our money. And it's a really, really good process. But Sam Emerson taught us how to record against properties and, and certain notices, opinions and stuff that, that hold these people, they can't do anything with the property, we keep it locked down until we get our money. Very important.
So are you saying on a few of them, we're the first to layman?
Can you, thank you. What's that?
Are we the first to lean? Is that why?
We, it just depends, sometimes there's, like there's seconds on a property or whatever, but we hold the property down until we get, it cannot be, it can't be transitioned on that person, it can't be, you know, entrusted to somebody else until we get our money. Nothing can happen, you can't do permits, can't rebuild, can't file insurance money until we get our dollars.
Excellent.
And you follow through, like you follow through all that, like do you guys have a program that does all that?
We maintain an Excel spreadsheet and we develop our own invoice process. I mean, literally I can put in four officers are there for three hours, it computes it automatically, so they get a final invoice. And none of the invoices have ever been challenged. We have our, our invoices from the companies, whether we rent an excavator, what we use to support the invoice that in post recovery for the project.
Is there a program for that?
No, we developed it ourselves. I have three individuals that, that work for me that are very crafty in, in that area. So we don't, you know, have to use software for that type of, and it is, you know, it's not that extensive, but it does work.
Brian, I'd like to make a quick comment too, because when we annex South Orville, the derelict and burnt out houses were close to a hundred or more. So over the years, we've really whittled that down. It's a fascinating thing to be around a long time and to see that work being done because it was, I mean, hundreds of burnt out houses.
Yeah, I will tell you that Brian Ring's connection with the county and a lot of these, these homes had went ten plus years without paying taxes.
Paying taxes.
And we're on the auction, you know, and Brian was able to make that work. And I mean, we, we got rid of nineteen, no, twenty-one homes that were purchased by developers during the auction this last year. And they are fixing them up or have been fixed back.
Good to hear, yeah.
Looking out, so that, it's a huge, it's a hurdle I couldn't get over.
It is.
Accomplishments, accomplishments, you know, we promote our department, we educate the community. That's the biggest part about code enforcement is educating the community about what's going on. New laws, new state bills, new ordinances, we're at Feather Fest today, it's National Night Out, Salmon Festival. Been seven community meetings, presentations at the Morton Rotary and Orville Rotary Association, Lyman College, partnership cleanups with Feather River Park and Rag the Dog Park, the Fish Hatchery. You know, we just, we are out there for people to see us and collaborating, working together with anybody that will work with us to solve the quality of life issues in the city. And that's huge, I mean, you know, I mean, the partnerships is, is so important that, I mean, it's hard to understand unless you're living in the moment. And the Department of Employment, Social Service, our Housing Navigation, the African American Family Rescue Center, Orville Rescue Mission Help Center, constantly go to meetings, be involved, let them know that code enforcement's there to support and help and in whatever direction that they would like to go, it's important for us. Again, I mean, just one big giant family trying to figure out the quality of life issues of the city that never seem to go away. And that's for every city in California and probably across the United States. I have a different presenter, so my forward button is here, so you shouldn't. I want to talk about Clean, City Works and Clean Streets, this is a grant, the partnership with, with Amy and the Better House Department, whatever you want, I like my house exclamation mark. But City Works, Clean Streets, these guys are, are pretty amazing, the work that they do and working in that partnership. And that was developed by former Chief Legron and myself about, we're going on ten years now of working with us, with these individuals and getting them through treatment, getting them out on the street and having them do some work and, and be paid for that work and, and to show responsibility, be a part of the solution and not part of the problem.
Yeah, good.
And we're proud of that.
Yes, and I, I just, to give you an idea, when I talk about that group, last year they collected three hundred and thirty-five thousand pounds of trash that was in public view in one donated dump truck from the City of Orville. And it did three hundred and thirty-four thousand pounds of trash this year, which tells you they aren't slowing down. And the trash isn't slowing down. And unfortunately, we have an element that lives out there in our society that thinks it's okay to throw their trash everywhere and leave their stuff everywhere, but again, an amazing group. So, you know, we'd love to extend that grant if that's possible, that would be awesome. We're going to continue to see your grants with Cal Recycle, Cal Trans, State Bill thirteen eighty-three. And I'm doing training for code enforcement. When I talk about year three in our code enforcement department as being a standalone department, you got to look back at, we do a lot of training and I believe in training, I think training is probably the most important things you do. But at year three, you look back and see, you know, is it necessary every year? And because some of the training does cost money, so there is some training that we'll do every other year that's, if it's, nothing's changing, if there isn't any new laws or new stagnant, just to try to, to not overtrain because we can do that as well, you have to be careful. I'd love to be able to do quarterly inspections of our massage parlors. That's a huge human trafficking issue in our city and other cities and their individuals and I know who they are. And, you know, they're going to be held to answer for too long for their behavior. And they don't live in this county, but, you know, they do work and have massage parlors in this county. And, you know, hopefully we can get a wrap around that. And securing the State of California Tobacco Inspection Grant, I sent my crew to a free training on how to do tobacco inspections. There is about twenty, twenty-eight million dollars worth of grant money out there and we hope to be a part of that and get into the schools and start educating kids about the use of, you know, vaping and the dangers of that. And also inspecting, you know, places that sell tobacco. My parents sold a gas station for fifty years, we sold tobacco products there and very, very familiar with, you know, individuals bringing tobacco products in from out of state into our community where there is no state tax paid on that. And you sell it out and make tons of money, that type of stuff does actually happen in the U County and happens in our city. So it's important that we're out there inspecting businesses that sell tobacco. Okay, I have, I do have a request and it's going to be. Okay, um, I have, I do have a request and it's going to be, uh, uh, a little bit of restructure in our, our, um, community navigator. Um, I'm going to take a, uh, I'm anticipating taking a position, moving it into our budget for a community enhancement coordinator. And this individual is going to oversee Clean Streets. Work closely with all the departments on any type of quality life issues that is out there in the world. Um, my time is, is stretched very thin. There's a lot of stuff that I miss. And it's important that, that this individual will be out there on the street, uh, managing and overseeing the help that Public Works needs, the helps that our, our streets need and any other quality life issues. The three-one-one program that'll show up, I know that code enforcement, I hope we get bombarded with, with reports, and I'm sure that we will, about graffiti, shopping carts, that type of stuff. With that information neededly to be able to give it to this individual and mobilize crews to pick up shopping carts, get rid of graffiti, whatever trash is dumped anywhere. There's a lot of seconds, a lot of minutes that turn into hours and days that, that can get past a person if you're trying to run too much. Yes.
It, it, it explained more of the restructuring. You want to take, what elements of the navigator program do you want to take? You want to, you want to, you want to rename that completely? Okay.
This individual will be, we have room for two navigators. We're going to take one of the positions and move it into this. This will be outreach, quality of life issues, managing city works out on the street, mobilizing, getting them out there. You know, there, it's, it's important that there's someone out there, boot something around from the time that they start until they finish. So it's a more efficient process than whether or not I'm getting messages, you know, you know, I get a hundred and fifty, two hundred messages a day. You know, this is going on, that's going on. I might be stuck in meeting twenty minutes, might go by before that can get addressed and the information can get out there. It's important that I have a contact person out there on the road dealing with individuals that are camping illegally, dealing with individuals that need services. We can coordinate the community navigator to go, where Clean Streets can go. When Public Works is safe, you know, when I talk about Clean Streets, seventy-plus percent of our time is spent with Public Works, you know, dealing with, with a lot of vegetation issues. And, and, you know, whenever you have overgrown vegetation, you'll have a transit camp. I mean, it's still what it is. I mean, you have to be able to eliminate and keep everything cut down, keep everything open, keep everything safe to where that isn't a, an area where they all want to go on camp. It's very important. This is a very important position. And I think it will be very useful for the city.
It's kind of like a, like a lead or a go-to person to work with, the navigator that we have and the other folks that are providing services out there on the streets. So, so, I mean, it's kind of like what you were saying, Scott, earlier about getting some support where needed. So Ron doesn't have to be that person who's-
Yeah, there's a lot of time that can go by where, you know, a person that's in an happening that needs to be addressed. This person will respond with the police department, Public Works, whatever's needed, where we have a quality of life issue and be able to, to direct where our resources need to go. More efficient.
Okay. I think that's it, Ron.
Yep.
Thank you, Ron.
Any questions?
No, we appreciate all your hard work.
I, I don't have a question, but I want to say to you that I'm thankful, because I think those, uh, trash cans downtown have made an amazing difference. It would be awesome if we could get the businesses to put trash cans in. We do have a place to put our trash now instead of them hiding them in the back, since I don't want to deal with people going through them. But anyways, I just wanted to say thank you. It's made an amazing difference.
You know, we would average anywhere between a hundred and two hundred calls of the trash cans downtown being the trash bags pulled out, dumped over. We've had one call since those have been, and that's an individual that caught one of them on fire. And they actually just replaced the containers inside and it was right back in the, you can't, I mean, they have graffiti proof paint on them. You can just rub the graffiti off if they want to tag them. So they, they actually worked very, very well. And we did some restructuring, Brian and I did some restructuring of the routing with the, um, recology and trash service downtown that's on separate days. So you don't have all the waste wheelers out there on Friday sitting there until Monday with everybody that wants to get in them. Now those are picked up in the middle of the week to where they just go, wow, they get picked up. And that's reduced a lot of complaints as well.
Yeah, I think you, a lot of you had mentioned that, you know, they set the cans out all weekend long and they get pillaged through and destroyed everywhere. So we finally did about a couple of months, we'll get them to change their routes to midweek, which I think has been really helpful.
Ron, I know you guys have been working hard on it, but it's still, uh, the underpasses and the, the population there. Any suggestions on-
I've had that.
Ron's suggestion, you know, legal suggestion? The, the movement of people in the United States, um, how we move people, we have to be very careful. You know, you have a right to exist. You have a right to be in certain areas. Um, do I believe that will be the case in the future? Now, I think that you'll see that change. And if you watch our government and, and legislation, some of the court decisions that are going on right now, I, I don't think life will be so easy for the unhoused in the next five plus years. And it all depends on, you know, certain administrations that are in place. My suggestion to, is, is constant pressure. You know, six forty-seven C of the penal code says you can't block a sidewalk. Okay? You're blocking a sidewalk, you know, you're going to have people that are telling you to move. Um, throwing trash in about, it's a crime. If I throw a gun wrapper out of my car driving down the road, I get pulled over and wrote a ticket. Why does it make it okay for individuals to dump three hundred and thirty-five thousand pounds of trash? That's just in our public view. That isn't our illegal banking science and stuff like that. Why does that make it okay? Doesn't make it okay? You know, so I, I think that there are important decisions. I, I would caution, you know, I, I follow so much stuff. And there's a, a case out of Fresno with their new ordinance with, uh, Mickey Two Hands was the guy that was arrested in October of twenty twenty-four. That is the first case that's going to go to trial on their, uh, illegal camping ordinance. It's an individual that lived down on the street for three years. They subsequently arrested him after trying to provide him services. He's taken that court to trial. What decision is made by a judge like that could be pretty drastic for the state of California. If he's found guilty, it's good for us. If he's found not guilty, it could be bad. But I, I do believe that constant pressure and, and implementing the laws that we already have in place, the ordinances that we have in place. Is there's nothing more frustrating than when you have a law on the books or an ordinance on the books and it's not being enforced. It's, you know, that just needs to happen. It's there for a reason. We need to use the tools that are given to us.
Thank you. One, one thing Ron has been looking into as well, and I can't remember if we talked about this at a council meeting or not, but just, you know, we, we did contract out for pressure washing a while back. But he has some resources that are left in the Clean Streets grant that have to be used for equipment.
Yeah.
And so we are looking into getting a city sprayer that the city works team and those partners can use on a regular basis. Hopefully, that will-
The amount of paint that we purchase right now, um, would pay for a power washer in two years. And this is a hot water, four thousand PSI, that will take graffiti completely off of, uh, concrete and streets.
I would like to see that because, I mean, it's great that you guys are painting over with gray and everything, but it, I mean, it still looks bad because it's not like, you know.
If we, if we can get, because again, the City Works program is probably one of the neatest programs that I've seen. And I mean, it's, it's a phenomenal tool because they do the work that nobody wants to do. But if we have a tool like that, that they can even go downtown as well, to do some of the curbs down there and sidewalks, but get on a regular cadence, maybe that'll keep some of those folks on the underpasses away as well.
And I really, I mean, our sidewalks downtown need to be addressed. I mean, the trash cans, we, we have to spray those off. There's a lot of, I mean-
Can't come to my house to clean my trash cans?
I think it's a good idea, that having a pressure washer not only for the graffiti thing, but also on and maintenance on our, our, especially downtown streets where, you know, it's a walking attractive notice for shopping. And that's, that's just a positive, period.
Great idea.
Good idea.
Any other questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We appreciate you.
Absolutely.
All right, we're on slide twenty-three of-
Of fifty?
Yeah.
Fifty-four.
Ish.
It's one fifteen, okay.
I'm going to make this, I'm going to try to be mindful of the time here, so.
Robert's not working again. There you go.
There we go.
So the last year, we completed the first Civic one-on-one.
Yeah.
Keep that to the community and I know it's a blast to do that again. I'd like to, I just, uh, I want to make sure that it's impactful. So I think I've mentioned to a few of you that I want to pivot to doing some videos. I think that it might be a little bit more impactful.
To put on the website, huh?
Put the Burton marketing for doing so, like kind of a, a template for the videos. Hopefully that comes soon. Implementing Tyler, Tyler and our Gov, which is still, um, underway and it's not functioning perfectly. It's, um, it actually has put our department behind. And so I've got, um, I've got them trying feverishly to catch up and they're helping each other and all the staff is. But it's just, the rollout has been, has been a little bit rough. It still isn't quite there. And I know that Tyson has put in quite a lot of work. He started taking over some of the role of, of, uh, just fixing some of the, some of the breaks, uh, which we really appreciate. But the, but Tyler themselves has not been helping us anymore.
Is the lag because of training?
No, it's the configuration.
Okay.
So it's just that the, the program is still not quite working properly. And so, like, Jody has, um, come up with workarounds to, to get where she needs to go, rather than just doing it the way that it should be. And then they keep sending lists over to Tyler and then Tyson goes in and he's just able to knock off some of those things. So he just solves them himself. Um, so we're still, are working on bringing that up to, I, I, I think it's going to take deep into the, into this fiscal, next fiscal year before we're up. Like, we're really solid ground with that. Uh, we've done some city code updates and we hired the marketing firm Burton and where they're, we've been working with them uh, for a few months now. They've, um, they've been, uh, they've done interviews with several people around town and they're putting together some, uh, different videos for, uh, for the travel industry, for builders, for, um, and then for civic pride, just with inside the community, that they're going to be rolling out on social media in different formats that are appropriate for each of the different topics. And then we hired the three-one-one service. Uh, my department did the rollout or did the RFP for three-one-one, but it's mostly going to live with Public Works and Code Enforcement. I was about to completely bow out of it, but they, the company that we hired Catalyst said that there is, there can be some benefits for community development, so I'm sticking around with that. We can use that to push out information to the city and I'm hoping that once everybody finds that out, that they don't use it. Because it, I believe strongly that it should be used for, um, there's a street closure or there's a fire or there's, this road's blocked up. But for things that people really need to know, we don't want them to get used to seeing messages so much that they stop looking at them. So we want them to be, when you see a message from the city, it's important and pay attention to it. So continuing into the next year, um, we're still working on the web. Well, we, we really, now we're in earnest working with that web, web-based development guy. That's the thing that we purchased last year. It was called OnCamino. And I was thankful that they changed the name, because I thought it was a very good name, but it's Catalyst. And, um, that's going pretty well. This is that decision tree that, that people can go on to sort of figure out what their project is and what the steps that they're going to need to do to get that done. And then, and estimated cost of what it'll be to get to where they want to go. It's actually, this one is pretty fun to work out, um, designing it, because we actually get to design it. I'm continuing to improve the relationships between the city and the community. And, um, I feel like that, I feel like I did a good job doing that last year and my department has. And my department has been, um, I don't know what they were like before, but they're great now. Everybody's speaking cheerfully to the customers and treating everybody with respect. I'm really happy with how that's going. I've been getting good feedback from the community about how different our department is and how much it is worth with. We're, we're going to do the development, the community development department remodels. This is going to be the lobby. This was on my slide last year. I didn't get to that because I really didn't want to do this. I wanted to make sure that when we did it, we did it right. So we spent quite a bit of time with, um, RGA planning out how it'll be. So I moved in the entire department over to one side. So it'll be kind of one-stop shopping. So building and planning will be all on one side. And my intention is to tear the walls down for my offices. That would be one big area. So that there'll be kind of a collaborative space and then, but everyone who deals with the public will be on one side. I'm going to move over to the other side. And then that includes the two bathroom remodels also.
Oh, wait a minute. That's generational. You can't do that. It goes back to nineteen fifty-five.
So continuing to pursue residential and commercial development. This has been a big challenge. I think everybody knows that's the rules and this and that. I've got some ideas moving forward. It's going to require some partnerships, more partnerships with, uh, people in the community and landowners that I'm hoping I might be able to turn around properties that they have that might be difficult to develop or sell into an opportunity for them to create mitigation banks and sell to people that can build things. Self-site revitalization plan implementation. So this one, this is a, this is a tenure project. You see this on my slide every year. Um, we have cleanup day coming up and the cleanup day is largely meant to have people start to feel better about their community and feel more connected to the city. This is a big thing that I want to do with this part is have them feel more connected to the city. So this, we are, we're collecting volunteers. We've determined some houses. Ron has graciously agreed to, um, hold off on the alley cleanup until this one day, April twenty-sixth, when we do the whole thing. So it really shows a big effort and, and it shows, um, again, to tie them to the community or, you know, a little bit further. And then continue to streamline the permitting process. So this is just an ongoing thing. As I realize ways that we work that we might be able to work a little bit better. So continuing to work and establish Orville as an energy hub. I know I've spoken with a lot of you in the room, like, you know, that the aspirations I have for, for this. And, um, we have, uh, we have some interesting things that are coming up in the future. And I'm looking forward to sharing to you those when the, when the time's appropriate. Working with ODBA to develop a, a plant. So we have thirty-seven units that are vacant. And so my, my idea is that if we, if we, um, work as a group, we can identify businesses that would make sense to bring into town, town. So we don't have five of this and four of that, but we have a shopping experience where people can go down and get all the things that they want and want, and want to park and walk around the town, buy lunch and all that stuff. So I'm hoping that, um, that we, that the group will work with me and that we can get that all completed or get a good plan for them. We're reviewing codes. Christina and Wes have started making a list of things that we might bring back to council to talk about changing to make things a little bit easier for people. And then there's the add-out committee that's doing something in that as well. And, um, and then, so we also want to, we want to bring to council sometime in the summer, an annexation plan for all the areas that want to annex. We're still working out what will be, what might be the best way and give a recommendation of what we think would be uh, the, the best order to take areas in. And I'll show you the orders that we're, or the areas that we plan to, to annex and, and how we plan to develop. Those are work with developers to, to come and develop them.
I have a, I have a question. So, go back. Please.
Hang up the screen.
Work with ODBA. No, it's the next one. To develop plan for filling vacant storefronts.
Yeah.
So that has to do with connecting those property owners-
It does.
-that have been sabotaging those storefronts for generations for tax write-offs. So what's the plan?
My plan-
Give them an offer that they can't refuse.
Yeah, one and by horse heads, but it will, uh, hopefully plans or, or tenants that will make sense to them that will make them want to market those. And I can't make them do it, but-
Right.
I believe that there are enough storefronts that are vacant where with, with, uh, building owners that will be interested in filling these. I'll do this again, those who've been, I think, already has, we're already kind of going after them. I guess a program, program where they're paying a, a yearly rent.
They're doing what?
A spreadsheet that shows all the businesses and, and owners and their enthusiasm and stories.
The real test is how long you let the mermaid be there now. Mermaid didn't pay, filled me.
I think that would be fun.
Her wig got burned off in the sun. Remember she had a big old wig on?
Yeah.
Ain't no wig on no more.
I mean, for those that won't, I'm open to that conversation too. We can do a workshop about-
Incentivize.
Yes.
Seriously.
All right, well, um, let us know how that works.
I will.
Okay, thank you.
I hope I can, I hope I can report successfully. So I touched on number five already, continuing exploration, mitigating impacts. So this is my idea about going to some property owners whose project- or property seems like it's undeveloped or not being, won't be for quite some time. See if I can work something out to do some kind of like a mitigation land bank for the developers that can build. And then perhaps create walking trails or some, some sort of health, public health thing that we could turn over to Feather River or something like that. And then I have some other ideas around that, but they're the concepts. So hopefully they'll work out. Truck food providers in North Oroville. This was on my slide last year, still continuing to hope to bring a grocery store to North Oroville. And we've got the food truck villages coming pretty soon. So then that will have a, no, at least some food options for the people that work in the alley. I put this on here, number seven, assisting businesses to, franchises to come to the Gateway Project. So I thought maybe if I start going after businesses that can come in there, then maybe that development starts to move on a little bit.
So would you be working in partnership with Mendez?
He's open to it.
Ultimately, we have, it's going to need to be, so.
Somebody needs to help him.
Number eight, I have a nut asking for additional positions. And Ken, from Thompson, I do appreciate your comments. That is a thing. I think that our department is actually okay and reasonably comfortable, but I want to move things around to bring the consultants that are, that we have in-house so that we can save quite a bit of money by doing that. We're thinking that we might be able to afford a, potentially a GIS, a dedicated GIS person and someone else to help out in IT. So that's a, GIS is a big important thing for all of us.
It's a huge, huge need.
So I have no new budgets requests. These are the same ones that I had last year that have been, I think, in addition to what my department had normally had. So these are, the only difference is I moved the money around a little bit. So I put a little bit more into the energy consultants. I think that they're going to be key for some of the, the energy hub things that I, that I've been working on. And then the marketing plan, so that you've already approved the contract with Burton Marketing for $125,000. And then the additional would be trade shows and collateral and things like that to go to those, to recruit and attract businesses that come here. And then I put in here, I did not use this last quarter by the grant funding of $30,000 in case if something comes up and if you run after it, I will still come to council and request it, but at least I can say it's in there. That's it. You have any questions? Is there?
Just one thing on customer service. I think I brought this up before. It would be wonderful if all the staff, and there may be resistance to this, war and name tags. It's such a small thing, but even being in and out as much as I am, half the time I can't remember staff's names and you feel stupid. So I think that's just, just a recommendation when it comes to customer service. A little bitty thing like that can make a huge difference in public interaction.
So how I saw that, I say, hey sister girl. Hey brother man.
I would try to make it a big deal, but it'd be nice if we, every new business that got a business license, had an opportunity to come to city council meeting and announce their business and get a little time on the YouTube. I don't know how you would coordinate it, but it'd be nice to, because there's a lot of businesses come to town that, you know, we heard by either Facebook or word. It'd be nice to have that business come to the city council meeting and get a little recognition.
That's a good idea. Yeah, I like that.
We're putting together a newsletter for my department. We'll push out to the, to the community and that'll put in how many permits we've got, new businesses that come to town, so we'll do a little highlight.
Yeah.
Are you going to have your own page on our website, community development page?
Did you already have a community?
Guess I should go there, yeah.
The Pat Hyatt page?
The Pat Hyatt page?
And we'll link the newsletter onto that page. And then that would go out to just anyone who signs up for it, which is.
We have talked about that, Ms. Schmerz. And I think some of the things were logistics about having new businesses, because I think a lot more happened than you would think. So it could be if we offered it to everybody, if everybody took advantage of it, it could be like one or two businesses a month, I mean, right? I mean, we were.
It's not very many.
No.
It's not very many?
No.
Okay. It's for new businesses, only a ton of renewals.
Right, right, yeah.
It's a few a month, it's not, it's not a ton.
Yeah, but a few a month, I guess my point was that that'd be one or two every council meeting, which could be.
Well, that's for that.
Can we have like a, like a short little video done at least? Not necessarily for council meetings, but put on the community page saying, you know, new business advertisements coming in or something? And then it goes out to the.
I thought too, when you're sending the letters out, just say voluntarily, if you'd like to come to city council meeting, come. We give you a recognition certificate or something, just saying that, hey, you're a new business in town, welcome you, get your address, what your business does, get their three minutes and be done.
I mean, we could just put that into the little packet when we give them their first time.
Yeah, simple, real simple.
That's it.
What about push notifications with 311? Can we make a category on that for our local ongoings of businesses and, you know, stuff like that?
We could, you know, kind of as I've said before, you know, whatever the council wants to do, this is fine with me, but I feel like the 311 push should really be emergencies or, you know, really, you know, not advertisements, because it'll water down the message and people will tend to stop looking at it if it's, you know, you know what I mean? So I do like the idea. It's what I'm hoping that my newsletter will take off. Just now.
So to speak to two different things, I'm on the, I've read the sheriff's office and what he's saying is true, is you don't want to inundate your people with all kinds of stuff. You do want to keep, if you just stay out in emergency and you want them to know it, you don't want to inundate them with all different kinds of messages all the time, because it is true what he said about they just won't respond anymore. And my other question to you is, like, your cleanup in Southside, how are you getting that message out to the community that, hey?
No.
We're not looking for volunteers, we're not, we're not.
We're not.
We're not promoting the day, because if we tell people that there's not, so you never will come. So, so what we're doing is we're, we're reaching out directly through groups that are, that maybe is finding volunteers and asking for volunteers. And if you'd like a volunteer, you can have that conversation afterwards.
So what we're saying is please do not advertise. The first time we did this in 2016 and it was supposed to be for a day. It took almost a month to clear 12 tons of trash and appliances and tires, because it was advertised and everyone came from Palermo, from Thermolino, you name it. So this is not something that's going to be advertised.
Well, I guess what my question is, so the other thing I'm working with, I'm with the community emergency response team also. So what we do is we try to work with the fires council members and stuff that are, that are in their communities and stuff. So I guess that was more of my question. I understand what you're saying, like, hey, I don't want it to be a free-for-all and everybody bring your trash. But how are you getting the word out to, like you said, those groups and stuff, like the churches?
We are reaching directly out to the churches.
They're on the team.
Several of the churches are on the team, putting this together.
Right.
Okay.
In South, specific Southside.
There's a large council of people working out.
Yeah.
Thank you for the question.
But thank you. Ooh, I'm so glad you asked.
Anybody else?
It's a fire police.
Thank you.
Getting her down, getting her down.
We appreciate you, Pat.
Absolutely.
All right. Good afternoon. I'm going to cover the fire department. I'm going to cover basically the same criteria that all the other departments are kind of, how we got to where we're at and what we're planning for in the future. Some of the things that come up, some challenges and how we're dealing with them. Some key accomplishments. We expanded staffing, as you know, from, sorry, can you hear me? I'm going to hold this here. We've expanded staffing with the 66-hour work week, which brought on three additional firefighters, which is one fire captain and two firefighter twos, which increases us to a total of 21 from 18. About 18 for many years, even before the transition into the transition. So it's a big accomplishment for us. I know it's a little pricey, but it does bring us up to par. NFPA is a standard that fire follows. And recommendations for the amount of firefighters per personnel is one firefighter for every thousand in population. So we've been operating where we're now.
Right, right.
The cooperative agreement with CalFire obviously helps, but Oroville Fire still exists. So we still try to maintain those standards. So 21 firefighters brings us up to a population of about 20,000 where we're at now. So we're looking really good there. It, it also allows for improved coverage reduced over time. And it actually, in a, in a way, does help with response time, helping with our firefighters that are more fresh, you know, bringing more firefighters on, you know, throughout the week. So they're not getting so drained, working exhausting hours. So we have that more of a pool to pull in to help with that kind of stuff. And chief?
Yeah, one other thing too, I noticed when we were talking, when we had our fire discussion a number of months ago, one thing was like making sure the firefighters got out and knew the businesses and were in the community. And they've really been doing a lot more business inspections now. And I've heard a lot of positive things about that. And this, I think, has helped enable them to do that.
Yeah, I'll cover a little bit about, a little bit more about that. But also more personnel enhanced safety for both the community and firefighters. Next, future growth initiated planning for a second fire station. We've kind of worked on it for years, a lot of years, as long as I remember. But it's really hitting some, some good teeth now, I feel. Seems like there's a lot of support. I know funding's always an issue, but it's something that we are continuing to plan for. And that's more of, you know, the format of how the fire stations would be located. And once that kind of takes another step forward, we'll work more on the strategic plan on how that's really going to operate and flow. Maybe even look at some potential, you know, combination staffing on the county and city side. You know, I don't want to speak for Chief Shol, but I know that we're going to research any avenue we can to help offset that cost as much. But also you've got to remember the MeloRues is in place and long-term goal, at least as it sits now, is I think built out of 1.8 million is what it'll generate. So that should help offset some of that cost.
Question. Because there is a lack of emergency response staff to cover the city in an appropriate response time. I would venture to say that we cannot talk about annexing parts of Thermolino without this one in place. Am I correct?
Yeah, ultimately, you know, the fire chief has a say into it, but life goes well. You know, we do have to be able to provide the service to annex. And I know that's been just before where we've seen the fire annexations and such. But, you know, my recommendation would be some form of a phased-in approach, you know, where we're kind of branching out and we can take it, take it as we can provide it, right? So in that plan, as we have firefighters, maybe we slowly annex, right? You know, it's not necessarily my call, but once we have a fire station out here, a public safety facility, I would feel 100% confident with starting off, because it's, the amount of firefighters will be there, the response.
Right.
And it also helps with the city.
What's the anticipated trajectory for this to come into fruition?
Cost.
But, oh, okay.
The West Station? So right, right now, we're going through the, it's being looked, the council approved the contract a couple, three council meetings or four maybe to have the site out there on.
Challenger.
Challenger, thank you. Expected to see what it would take and how much it would cost to convert that into a compliant public safety facility. So we'll have that, we'll probably have that done by summer. And then we'll be able to decide, okay, is this, is this, not done by, like, construction done?
Right, but the assessment.
Yeah. Then we'll know, is that a viable location? If it's not viable, I mean, that's the first thing, is it a viable location? And then from there, we got to figure out how we're going to, if it is and all things.
Right.
It seems like everyone I spoke to, it's a great, it's a great location for fire. I think it meets all the boxes. It's the, the Western development. It's a matter of now is, can that be done economically? And then from there, obviously, we got to, if it is, we got to find the funding. And I know we, Amy and I had had discussions about trying to get CDPG for that. Because it's revenue coming in right now through the MeloRues is, is not going to pay for it.
Yeah, it's minimal.
It's like 60,000.
Yeah, I think it's 50 a year. It's not a thing.
There's two sides to it, one's for the facility, one's for personnel. And there's two things we look at that we're really looking for when we're looking for a location for something like this. One is the general plan and how we're trying to reduce response times citywide. So now there's a lot of calls. The downtown station's in a really, really good location and it's covering the majority of the calls. And we are team those response times, but that's because majority of the calls are located in that area. As the population increases out here, we're going to start seeing service demand out here. As those calls rise, we're not going to, we'll no longer be meeting those response times. Takes over seven minutes to get from downtown to here. And I know the Thermolino station's probably about the same timeframe. So we want to try to keep it in five minutes or less, start CPR sooner, keep fires smaller.
Right.
So, and everything that I've found so far in my research, it's, it's a good location. It may not necessarily need to be that building, but somewhere in that, that area. And that's going to chump that side of town to where we'll be able to have a five-minute response time or less on this side of town. Because this is where we're seeing most of the development anyways. And moving forward and talking planning, they agree with that. Enhanced response time citywide. Citywide improvements in emergency response efficiency. So with the additional staffing, we've refra, we've kind of rephrased our, our, the way that we respond. And one of those things that we looked at, I came to council a couple of months ago, was for the priority dispatching. And I think I'll talk a little bit more about that as well. But it's really early to, to really see, but we are seeing some reduction in all. But I really think we need to be close to that year out. Hopefully by the end of the year, I'll be able to see if we were able to eliminate X amount of calls, roughly. I'll never have an exact amount, because that would be a prediction on who's going to call 911 or not from those facilities. But we are starting to see some reduction. And I'll talk about stats a little bit, which leads into this.
There's multiple, I've noticed there's multiple calls that a one particular resident, always.
Frequent flyer.
It's frequent, I mean, like every week. And it amazes me, because I already know that it's the guy that, and I'm saying this with all due respect, I have fallen and I cannot get up. And so you've got your fire truck and the ambulance comes zooming down our street. So, but you cannot assume, that's what you're going to tell me. Thank you, I just answered my own question.
We could, but I'd recommend not to. Calls that we've reduced are at skilled nursing and medical offices. So there's medical staff there. So I feel a little bit, and we're talking about somebody smashes their toe, goes to see their family doctor. Doctor's office doesn't have an x-ray, so maybe, you know, the next place he goes, the emergency room to get an x-ray. So their, their policy is to call 911 and that activates the whole system. And then we, we respond out. But now we're screening those calls, because there's medical staff on scene and we view them as a transport only. You just need to go to the hospital to get an x-ray, it's not an emergency. So we haven't branched out outside of that, of not responding to anything, where there's not some kind of professional at scene, medical professional.
I'm going to call Eli Thomas.
Community safety pre-planning, life safety inspections for businesses to enhance. Brian just mentioned this is something we really shift towards. And we've been really aggressive. Matt Bertrand, one of our battalions, she's done a great job. He's kind of leading it. Nancy's been amazing help and she's making contact with every business in town and we're coming out and, and we're making sure that the business is safe for them, that's safe for visitors and it's safe for our community. And these are little things. We're not going out there disrupting their business, but we're making sure that their exit signs light up. Emergency floodlights, the sign you see there, this door is to remain unlocked during business hours. We want to make sure that those things, if they have exits, are clearly visible and open to.
That's good.
Power going out, fire, certain locations, making sure smoke alarms are working. We're not stacking stuff up against breakers. There's good fire department access, there's good access for the public to come in. There's good access for the public to come in and out safely. And and we're not going out and dropping the hammer on. We're really using it more as an educational format. And I encourage our engine companies to go out there because that gives them the opportunity to go out and see the businesses, walk through them, meet business owners, meet customers. And it seems to be going pretty well, heard a lot of good feedback. Like I said, we're not going out there and being hard on them. It's really just an educational thing, but also making sure that they're in compliance. And it's state law we have to do as well.
I think it's also, it's a great opportunity to have that dialogue and communication where if any unique things, I know Ms. Ray, you mentioned this, just some of the businesses have some unique components to them. And this gives them an opportunity to have some conversation.
The layout, now we can put a face to it.
Yeah, that's good.
I know the state, Chris, the state law requires an annual inspection. Do you think we'll ever meet that in terms of the city's business environment in terms of an annual inspection?
I hope so. So we're really, the prevention isn't in the contract. So we work with BJ Foster and City's Fire Marshal quite a bit. And he's handling more of the R2s, merchant tiles.
Gotcha.
Ease, educational, like those types of more bigger facilities that come with more regulations. You know, what we're kind of helping with is pretty smart, but I'm optimistic that right now it's obviously it's catch up for us. And it caught up. And then from there, having Nancy in there, she's going to help schedule all those out in the future so that we stay on top of them. I mean, it's, it's so phenomenal having her there. She has a packet made. It's scheduled and everything with inspections, business name, contact, who they're going to see when they walk up. They know the business owner's name, they know the business type. And she's handing them a folder with the address and everything. And they they just take that and show up when she tells them to show up and they go out and they take care of it. So it's working really well, we're very appreciative of it. And it sounds like the community is as well.
Nice.
Priority dispatching, talked a little bit about that already. And that's which calls we're responding to and not responding to. And that was a council decision. I don't think we're to the point where we need to expand it outside of nursing and medical facilities yet. But I'll cover the stats and you'll kind of see where some of my concerns are because I want to make sure that we're deploying our resources adequately. I don't want to tie them up on toe pain when there's somebody not breathing in town. So and that will help correct some of that. I did want to talk a little bit about the newly added rescue support vehicle. This is something you guys approved last year. Very thankful of it. It's been heavily used. I have a picture of it down there in the middle. You can see it's got a float boat on top that it carries and it has the utility bed on the back. So it carries assortment of different tools. And also pulls the rescue boat behind that. But it it's really, it's a rescue support vehicle. We use it during floods, this one actually made money. I haven't seen the check come in yet, but it's probably made 4, 5, 6,000. Staged for that through an OES prepo. But it's had, I wish I had the numbers, but I want to say they performed like 12 rescues. And it was all the way even in Glen County, there was a community there that was completely trapped. And their local jurisdiction wasn't able really to get in there and safely mitigate it. So we were able to go over there and perform multiple rescues, even in another county, saving a whole community of people, getting them out of a flooded area.
So is that what you're making reference to when you say it's made money for us because of a memorandum of understanding?
Yes, an agreement with OES. And it gets reimbursed at, it's not very much because it's a pretty small vehicle. It doesn't take a ton to maintain it. But yeah, it, I haven't seen the exact numbers, but it has an offer when I did. It is similar when we purchased the airport rescue. That thing paid for itself probably three or four times over. So it's a good investment.
Thank you.
Good work.
So.
It's the same one.
I was going to say.
We don't, we don't have it yet.
So I started on this a couple of weeks ago. I mean, I was on vacation last week, so I started on it a couple of weeks ago. But this is pretty much covered thanks to Amy. Thank you. But not only with the ladder truck, you know, I, my concern with that is, you know, the current ladder truck's 24, almost 25 years old. It's a lot of wear and tear. So it's needing to be replaced. Thanks to Amy, it sounds like it will be. But also in that grant too is another new engine. So going back to the potential new fire station. So the engine that the city ordered two years ago, April, will replace engine 91. It's the downtown station. That one should be here in the next 12 months. And I'll obviously be sharing that with all of you, a big media blast. We're super excited for that thing to show up. It's completely custom built from the ground up for the city of Orville. So we're really, really excited about it. But the new truck will also go downtown. But the second engine would would come out to the new.
Yes.
Our new building that we're already claiming.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it'll have a brand new fire engine there as well. And then we'll, we'll take one of the 2010s meals and we'll also have a reserve out there.
Nice.
So we'll have two reserve fire engines, two frontline engines and a reserve ladder truck. So it'll be sitting better than I can, I know, for a long, long, long time. And it's like 4.3 million in equipment. And we are very grateful for that and grateful for your guys' support to get us to where we are. It's been one of my goals when I came over, not only to the agency, but as the department head for the city fire department, that, you know, was to get new equipment and very, very grateful for that.
Are the paint schemes going to be in line with the new engine?
Yes, so if you guys saw the type six, which Amy helped fund as well, the new type six fire engine, it's red, it's Pierce number 60 red, it's kind of a darker red. But the engines and trucks will all match. So they'll kind of have a gray roof on top, kind of give them an outside different look. Like a lot of the county engines are red and white, but this one will be red and gray. All of them, they'll all be color matching.
Good.
They're going to be beautiful.
Is there, I'm sorry, is there a way to, if this is outside the scope of being able to do it financially within a reasonable amount of money, could we repaint the old engines to match the new paint scheme?
It's in Blaine's ring, I'm laughing.
And it's not, if, if, you know, that's.
We absolutely can't, but I think it, I just think we could spend it elsewhere.
Yeah.
Because we're 10, 15 years, 10, almost 15 years on those engines. They got maybe five more on them. So I don't know if it would be.
Yeah.
Well, 20 years ago, we bought the ladder truck. The fireman wanted it painted lime green. It was $82,000 to change the color.
Yeah.
To destroy a completely fine paint job to change the color, so.
So I couldn't find two taxpayers, thought it was a good idea.
I have a question. I'm just curious, since we merged with CAL FIRE, anything that they feel is necessary, it's a mandate for us to provide in in regards to equipment? Not at all?
CAL FIRE, they put on this classification. Now, they do with the mechanic, it will be held to different standards as far as service. So tires will get replaced sooner than they were before, which isn't necessarily a bad thing. But though there's changes as far as on the maintenance of the vehicle, how we, how they're maintained and when stuff's replaced or how it's replaced. But that's just because our CAL FIRE mechanics only know one way to do it. So and we run into some of those challenges sometimes where we're used to just putting bigger tires on something where they don't allow that. So, yeah. But as far as the spec itself, I was part of the committee to a point. Battalion Chief Isaac Reese led that committee. And then he had a fire captain, an engineer and a couple of firefighters who all got together and completely designed it to a point, right? They had some pretty crazy ideas. But no, it was designed by our spokes here locally under, under me. And it was very specific to the city needs to a point. I mean, there was some stuff that were planned for out of county, but no, it's built custom right here. So I won't go too much into this one.
There you go.
I'll miss it and hang up. Missing a slide. There it is. And I'm going to come to council a little bit better with these numbers and really break down like how many calls our battalion chiefs went to, how many calls I went to, which is very low. I did promise you last year to get my numbers up, I can get them up very much. I think I responded to like 30 calls. But our medicals, you can see, and these are specific calls to the city.
Wow.
So these are only city calls. So this doesn't count in Orville, just going to Kelly Ridge to cover a call or anything like that. This is just calls generated in the city. There's a CAL FIRE resource responding to the city of Buick County. There was 5,587 units. There was 24 structures. And I'm really working on trying to break this down because I'm interested into, we went to 24 structured fires in the city, but how many are still standing today? And and that's a really hard stat to grab unless we're individually grabbing it on each call. But we're looking at some new software that will break up some of these stats. Because this drives, this really drives everything that I do. It's what I'm looking at, stats and the numbers. And we're constantly, constantly analyzing these numbers and our response times. And that's why, you know, the Opticom and all those types of things that that you guys have supported us with or or making those numbers. 24 structure fires, 61 vegetation fires in the city of Orville. A lot of those are probably pretty small, but there was, what was 61? And I'd like to also break that down by arrest as well and maybe that's something I can refer to Chief Wines on.
Is that something, are most of those vegetation fires started by our?
I would comfortably say over 90% are human caused. But there is, you know, I mean, the other causes are accidental, right? The power line drops or lighting, we don't see a lot of that in the city. So most of the time it's going to be human caused.
I just read a report down in LA and the LA Fire Department was reporting that 64% of the vegetation fires were were caused by homeless category population in the rural area. 64% were caused by the homeless population. So that's another factor to realize what the homeless population does to us.
Yeah, it's a drain. And and every single one of these calls generates a report, a report for service that, you know, a medical report takes, because we do EPCR, a medical report can take about 45 minutes to write. And then the fire report can take days to write. Other fires would be like vehicle fires, rubbish fires, trash can fires, such like that, 471. Hazmats and public assists lumped those together, 516. Public assists could be us just going out helping somebody out.
I have a question on that. So this doesn't capture city limits over Thermalito, 63, or does it capture that?
This is all just city calls.
Just so that it's not capturing in the city limits of the other calls that are happening that CAL FIRE is covering? But that would be really interesting.
Any call that somebody called 911, fire rescue in the city is.
Okay, so it is capturing that.
Right, but it doesn't capture us assisting them or them assisting us. This is just how many calls were generated for fire rescue.
Okay.
Last year, but not a whole business.
It's total. I said which ones are coming from our state. Well, I could, I could only grab certain numbers because it doesn't populate.
Is it last year, but I'm sure.
Yeah, last year.
So Chief, we don't, we don't know on that 6,600, how many were responded from downtown station versus say headquarters station?
No, but I'll have some closer numbers. That's why I like to put a presentation, because it is interesting. And especially when I'm asking for stuff to understand, you know, how many calls we're going to and how many times we're getting assisted assisting them. But I'll have that in a powerpoint presentation on plan, breaking it down more. It's just taking me, I like to have it done sooner, it's just taking me a lot longer.
You have to break it down by engine company.
Yeah. Some budget requests for next year. I have the area ladder truck, I didn't want to throw a bunch of stuff on there, but like I said, things changed.
Yes.
Amy here, budget request, we are, the fire department is requesting a new command vehicle to replace the battalion 9B pickup truck. And and right now Isaac's operating out of an older F-150, smaller pickup truck and it gets beat the heck off road. But it's getting used and abused and the intent is to replace that. And then that would become a utility pickup truck for the station up here. We currently have one for the downtown station. But I believe it's 147,000 for a new command vehicle. And that covers everything, lights, sirens, radios, gives us our little command post in the back. And we've really learned that we have to prepare for the worst in this community. So this is my battalion chiefs, this is their office, they spend a lot of time in it. So I want to make sure that their vehicles are are top notch and it makes their job easier to be more successful in the field. And and they're organizing incidents with with hundreds of firefighters that show up. So we really need to provide them with with the tools that they need. And they spend as much time in the mobile office as they do in their office office. Also, there is, I put in a request for a minor remodel of the downtown station. It's built, I believe, in 82, if I'm not mistaken. There was a remodel on the fire side in 2011 or 12, something like that. And it included most of it, but not all of it didn't trickle into the kitchen. So the cabinets and stuff are original from the 80s and guys are replacing the hinges and stuff. They're, they're pretty beat up. So and the floors that were installed with the remodel weren't, they're not industrial friendly. They're just beat the heck. And to properly sanitize and stuff after the guys have stepped in stuff that they don't want or to get it on, it's not, it's not friendly to to decon. So we're looking at basically stripping everything that is out, cleaning up the concrete that's in there and staining up, I think it'll last forever. But it's also like bleachable, we could put bleach down on the ground if if needed for, you know, anything that that might be in it. But it's important for them to sanitize because that's their home, right? They're, they're hanging out after five, watching TV, waiting for the next call. We want it to be cleaned in their form. And unfortunately, the flooring was glued and laminate and it's just, it's falling apart. It's super dirty and it's not working well. Apparatus bay roll up door, I requested a little bit of funding for that. The two main doors open, going back to this calls thousands of times, times two. Every time that they're responding to call, we see those things just, they they don't take that kind of abuse with the little sockets and stuff like, worked with RJ and Sharps and like, what can we do to minimize this problem? Anyways, the company that built the doors, I think they're the original doors from the 80s. That that company is no longer in business. So we're looking at purchasing a door, we're a company still in in business and we can get the parts that's needed, something that do go down, we can get it replaced.
What's a door cost?
So right now, in fact, we've been, well, it's about nine grand. But it's not necessarily the cost, it's the time that it takes to get it to. So I'd also like to propose funding a door that is readily available because we've, we've been broke down with the front door for probably close to three months now. Insurance was supposed to come out the other day and they had some issues and weren't able to make it. So this would be nice to, you know, keep the ball rolling. And right now they're responding out back and there's, you know, cops and, you know, it's just a lot going out back. So we try to really stick to the front, but we've been compromised there for a while. The fire station primary radios are pretty old, so for speaking 10,000 for those as well. The ladder truck was unfortunately damaged a few months back. I won't get into personal things, it shouldn't happen again. But anyways, ladder truck's pulling out, received some damage. And it's about 10,500 to to replace that. And I've really kicked it around and do we want to wait for a new truck? But I also don't want to let this one get neglected as well because I think it would be wise to keep it around for a few years. Just invent that one going, the new one going down. Because we're going to have to work bugs out of it, it's going to have issues. So that's just what happens with new custom built stuff. So and the engines will be the same. And then something we talked about, I came to council with the Opticom, was phase two of the Opticom. And that phase two is 50,000, but that's on the high end. I think we've come in way lower than that. And we're, I think we have four lights, four signals that have already been updated. So we're starting to see those kind of slowly trickle out. It's a process, working with CAL Trans and Mike's really busy as well. But yeah, those are starting to roll out. We're excited about that. And I think at a total that's 286, 86,000.
For cap lock.
For everything. That's everything, this command vehicle. That's everything, this command vehicle, uh, everything. But on, you know, my, my priority on that is obviously the, the command, the command vehicle is important for the battalion chiefs in the field to, to give them the proper tools.
Has there been any thought about changing from roll-up doors to swing doors?
So we're, we're, so sixty-five thousand dollars to go to the accordion-style doors, so we'll look into that at the, at the new facility.
Yeah.
If the money's there, but I don't, I'm not sure that I feel, feel that it's really needed. We've been through this lot of money, hundred and sixty, or sixty-five thousand per door.
Yeah.
So, and they're, they're kind of an accordion style, they open up, they last forever from what they've said, until somebody hits it.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Had that happen twice.
Yeah, our door, I think a, a upgraded commercial like roll-up door like that's only going to cycle like, I think the lifespan's like ten thousand. And we probably do that in a matter of a couple of months, three, three months. Gotta go up, pull out, gotta go down, gotta, you know, and when you come back, gotta go up, gotta go down. And we keep those doors locked and secure because of traffic and visitors. That's all I have, thank you.
Cool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate you, thank you.
Yeah. All right, I apologize for, for running late. Now I'm gonna, I'll calendar more time next week, I think it's important for you to hear from everybody. Okay, is everyone okay? We still have, we have police, other work still.
I should have put a time. Can I, can I be the timekeeper? From now, no, not you, but from now on.
Welcome. It's hard to cut it short, I, I just gotta calendar longer next week.
I get it.
I will be quick on this one, we'll say that you've already been running with the LPR system, that's the ultimate advice, complete reading. Been a tremendous help in, in capturing people. Still utilizing its full implementation and that just comes with the time needed to work with the system. Social media presence, constant increase on that. Uh, the, the theme this next year is gonna be community involvement and organically, not meetings, not scheduling, but opportunities for the community to work with the cops, work with MLEs, work with everybody. So the communication is a constant flow versus what we're able to do right now. Uh, working on the in-car patrol cameras, that's been crucial for really alleviating a lot of complaints. The, the staunch complainers that we have out there really don't have a reason to complain, they scream the loudest and the videos are the ones that saves our wake and when we go back and show them, no, there wasn't anything racial, no, they did everything correct. And those that are legitimate, it shows exactly when we're wrong and we will make the corrective actions. Restructured command staff, uh, getting rid of the assistant chief position, moving to that lieutenant position. I've got some proposals for you for next week about taking that assistant chief, moving it to a lieutenant position so that we can have a broader scope of supervision along the ranks. Of course, I was appointed, that's kinda obvious. And a big thing now is we've started the community strike team implementation. We've had some hiccups with recruitment, uh, we had three or four people in background, I decided to cancel, uh, three of those four. Uh, they were not up to the standards of what I expect for this community and, uh, so we canceled them. And then go short instead of picking in a bad apple. Uh, but that will be huge part of right now. We've had a problem with being only reactive in law enforcement and when we're, national average is two point one officers per thousand. We're at one point one. California standard is three point one, so we're one-third of the California average and half the national average. So you can see that you get through them very difficult. Troops are doing great, we're doing more with less, but we wanna do more with more. So we're continuing to recruit, but only the top candidates. Uh, we're not looking at just filling bodies. But the community strike team, that is a proactive team only, they do not respond to calls, they work with community members. They're downtown doing foot patrols, they're in the south side doing foot patrols, they're on bike patrols. They're stopping in to have a cup of coffee with people to find out where the needs are and then start doing trail. We need to best our resources.
Appreciate that.
So you're gonna be seeing that CST coming out. Getting staffing, kinda hurting right now, but we're still not gonna stop even if it's just one person. You're gonna start seeing CST running around the community and ask just to meet people for right now. All right, key, and we continued into the next year, we're gonna continue to restructure the agency. We've basically had to do a top-to-bottom look and reevaluate as to where we're not being efficient, which was everywhere. And so we're fixing it. Restructuring the unused and unfilled positions, the irony of that is we have typically only filled nine and only positions and all of a sudden, we are almost full. And so we're gonna be able to utilize, um, those in a different capacity, working with code enforcement and assigning some MLEs specifically to code enforcement, so we can go en masse and not just one department doing it, but we're tag-teaming everything.
Excuse me, what do you think the reason is for the increase in, um, applications for the MLE?
I think it's just this continued atmosphere and the attitude of what this world is going to become. And so I, I'm just, as we've talked about, there is something about this community and it's, it's starting to light a little bit of a fire.
Okay.
And, uh, on the law enforcement side, we have a lot of obstacles and history to overcome. On the MLE side, it wasn't as heavy, so we saw a lot of people, had some really high-quality people coming in.
Good.
With a lot of diversity coming. One candidate comes from Nigeria, he's came, came here and he's a business owner here, uh, for the last couple of years. And so from that perspective and just that unique, it was really awesome to visit with him and meet with him. Uh, they're gonna bring a lot to the table for this community. Continuing to be, uh, team, yes?
No, I was gonna kind of piggyback up that. I had, in the last week, I've had two conversations, one with, with a, a person from Reading and the other from a person from Chico talking about that exact thing. And, uh, the person from Reading, uh, uh, actually recognized me from being on the news. And, and, uh, they, they, they started making the comment about, what are you guys doing in Orville, like, what's going on there? Because clearly things are shifting and, and so now they, they made the comment that they were, uh, they were watching people in Reading start to pay attention to what's happening here and the same comment from Chico as well, same comment. Like what's happening in Orville that's different, we're watching you guys and it seems like Orville's doing some different stuff, right? So, so I, I agree with that and I, and I think it's a, I think it's a concerted effort from all parties, all of us, right? Yeah.
And I think as far as law enforcement, I'm right at the edge of breaking that seal where we're gonna see a lot of applicants. I've got a lot of people out there that are interested, it's just finding that right combination, just really start bringing some people over. We'll go, we'll see what happens. Big thing is really the PD has been staffed at low numbers for all this time and now we're seeing that as we're trying to get staffing and looking at that, we're so far behind. So we've got a plan in place, we're gonna continue to get that equipment to fully staff. And again, increase community interactions, it's, it's so, so important for people to just know us by first name and just interact so that we know. We're working on different programs, like an email system where it's not for emergency, it's just to let us know ahead of time. Why wait until it becomes a problem when we might be able to figure it out before it becomes a problem? So just an outlet for people, yes?
Will you be outlet in the school too?
Uh, we're gonna, we're trying to do everything and so right now I'm, I found I'm hitting off more than I can chew right now, so I have to kind of pull back a little bit, get my feet underneath me, get this solid, then take on the next bite. And so I got a little over excited, so now I'm gonna come back and do.
Who's filtering the, the, who would be filtering those emails?
That would be most likely the CST, the strike team.
Oh.
So that they can react instantly. This is not a filter, this is not a.
I was gonna say.
Straight to the people.
Sister girls over work.
Well, I'm not gonna disagree with that. That's absolutely what you're gonna say.
Okay.
But no, I would rightly go CST, so they can take a look at it and say, hey, reach out to immediately, because it's all about follow-up.
Yes.
Is the number one thing, but we actually do something about it, I've, I've said it from time to time again. Words are great, what are we doing to put it into action?
Right, right.
And so now we're trying to put it into action, so that's what we're hoping that will be. So as far as the LPRs, which are great, but they only capture snapshots. Especially with the planned development downstairs and be doing other parks, trying to bring life downtown. It's, we can't be everywhere, law enforcement can't be, the community can't be. So I wanna get these camera systems downtown into these parks, especially when we're dealing with the massive amount of vandalism that's happening to the bathrooms. Uh, so I'm working with, actually, I think I'm gonna go with Flock, has a twenty-four hour, uh, constantly recorded camera system. And, uh, and talking to some of you here soon about that. And right now, based on what I'm looking at for Bedrock, MLK and Vicentennial, it's a cheaper annual cost than that one trailer that we're using for LBT.
Hewitt, Hewitt Park too.
Yeah, we can expand, the great thing about the Flock system is we can just expand and all they need is four cameras at a time.
Right.
You can just piece to you.
Yeah.
I love the Vigilant system, but they needed it to be a full system and it's a hundred and ninety thousand dollars for about a thirty-three site location. So this allows us to go take smaller bites at a time, so we're not just eating it up all at once. Cause there's IT issues, there was all kind of, plus they're already on the cellular system, they have solar power and it just gives us more opportunities and more options than Vigilant do. Uh, further development of the strike team, um, that I think is just gonna be such a key component because it's interactive and they're not responding to calls. They're doing what's needed by the community, it's community-driven.
That's cool, that's a good idea.
So really excited about that program, we just need to bodies.
Were you able to pull folks from local? That's your main.
I, as far as the officers go, I have yet to see the last round, this is the first time we've opened up to outside of the MLE, the PD world. I think two were not qualified, so it looks like I only have one to move forward on, I haven't seen that packet yet.
Okay.
But we'll just do it again.
Yeah.
We'll just do it again and keep.
It's kinda like fishing.
Yeah, exactly.
Are we starting the cameras? Are we still monitoring for gunshots or is that?
We still have the gunshots, uh, and what I'm looking at is, it's nice, but is it a feature we're actually using? So we're not really utilizing it, so I'd like to kinda look at taking the funding that we're paying for that and roll that into offset with the cameras. So between the LBT trailer and the gunshot cameras, we could effectively, it doesn't, there's no increase in costs.
Is there like, is there like a count, how many times adhere as gunshots in a month?
We don't get that many, I mean, Kelly, I don't know if you have exactly.
So it does sideshow, you know, like car drifting things, we get that a lot, almost every weekend. The gunshots, not that much and fireworks, we get quite a bit as well.
Yeah.
But how do you use that data?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And most of the time when we have gunshots, we're getting a call for service anyway.
Right.
So the overlap, they are accurate, on our recent OAS, it, it picked them up very clearly. So they do work, it's not a matter of that, it's a matter of how are we, is it benefiting the community?
How are you using the data, right?
Right, paying for the buck, I can see that, pull that into camera system, we're monitoring parts, we're roaming, we'll get a lot more bank for the buck out of it. Expanded presence, detective bureau, we gotta get that, just what we've already done, we've only added, by moving Darnell to the lieutenant and really taking that, we don't have any additional detectives and yet we've been able to effectively close out, they're still working with the DAs, we had a fentanyl overdose, we had a double home invasion. Um, I forget even what the other call, but they're, they're closing out cases and what that does is it shows patrol that what they're taking the reports on matters and it allows somebody to continue and see closure. And so it's had a double benefit, not just closing out the case, but patrol is actually seeing closure. So get that up to, uh, two more detectives, we have one coming onboard, a veteran that's bringing tens of thousands of dollars of computer forensic equipment. Uh, she's, uh, Secret Service certified in computer forensics and mobile forensics. And so she's bringing all that equipment, she'll be on next week, so that'll be a second and that'll be a third. Again, implementing full controls and bike patrols, both in, in south side and the downtown district. Mobile computers for patrol vehicles, that's gonna just maximize our ability to run people and take the load off the dispatch. And then the big one is identifying office space. In addition to the cars that I'm already needing this year for emergencies, we're looking at putting on an ongoing request for basically four new patrol, patrol vehicles per year, that'll put us on an eight-year rotation uh, for patrol vehicles and then ten-year for admin cars. We still don't have a AC system for report writing, so it gets pretty sweltering in there in the summertime. Furniture, we gotta, we're gonna have to remodel because getting a building or some additional office space, uh, probably isn't gonna be a quick fix. So I'm gonna have to get rid of some conference rooms and do anything and turn that into a office space. Citywide camera system, again, anywhere from forty, we can get as big as we want, but right now I've got a quote for, um, it's a little less than forty thousand a year for three different locations and we can expand that as needed. And then temporary, temporary office for later. Okay, hope you got that correct. Yes, sorry.
Uh, well, I was just gonna offer, uh, and this is something that, because of the fire building and, and this is a down-the-road, it's not gonna happen tomorrow, but there is a significant second-floor ability in the fire station side where the apparatus bay is. And if you wanted to expand your office space there, you could probably triple or quadruple your office space in terms of, of second floor in that apparatus bay and it might even help the Fire Department, so it's just something to look at. We've often talked about it, cause they built the building too damn tall. I mean, it really is, it's, why is it so tall in that bay? So there is a second floor in the Fire Department, it might be a down-the-road thing, so you can, you know, add more office space. I certainly agree with you that you need more office space to do your job, just an idea, not a thought pattern.
Yeah, I'm open to all suggestions at this point, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You're gonna get a good drive.
Yeah. Public works. End the show. Alyssa has twenty-five slides to herself.
And I will, I will keep it quick because you all already have a pretty good idea of, um, hopefully it works against what we've been doing. So as far as key accomplishments, um, one sixty-two, that's gonna be a big one. We stated, uh, or I did a good job earlier. Uh, we hired some folks, so, uh, Tim Kaber, Pemon, uh, we'll have a museum curator starting middle of next month. And we have Trudy now, Bud Shelton, and, you know, uh, Scott Thompson kind of talked about, just, the folks are, can, can be overwhelmed with, with work, um, public works, it's an exception. Um, so just having, the, having the help has been fantastic. Um, we've been busy this winter with emergency culprit repairs. We completed a, a really awesome micro-surfacing project, that's one, a picture over there, it's Montgomery. And Myers as well, Myers was split into two phases, so people working on Myers. PG&E wanted to coordinate the PG&E on to finish up that project, so we're waiting for them to get out of the way. But that work is tentatively planned for end of May to wrap up Myers. Completed that full-up reconstruction, um, at Nelson and started our CMMS. We also have been very busy at the airports, you don't hear a lot about the airport, but, um, getting pre-applications in for grants. Worked on an airport layout plan and supported Halloween operations for the Thompson fire. Our sewer guys have been very busy, busy as well, sixty-three miles of sewer made cleaned and nineteen miles of CCTV for inspections and root funding, so a lot of our, um, sewer has roots, the root intrusion, so this is to help treat that. We implemented, as you were aware, um, the project prioritization list for the large programmatic or capital improvements. Uh, what I noticed when I first came on is that there was just an overwhelming amount of need for, for big projects. Um, it's just been deferred for a long time and everything was important. So coming up with some kind of system, still, you know, still very open to feedback on that system, uh, was, was, was needed. Lot home painting and dry rot repair, so expected completion is May second, that still holds true. Uh, I believe there is an event, that's what's been of guest today, this is the tenth, so we're, that's really, we're making sure we're getting done. And Army Corps inspection of the levee is in May. Um, we initiated this Title VI. It's an anti-discrimination program, so there'll be some training involved with that. That's relatively new and required for federal and state funding. Procured traffic calming devices, I think these have been fantastic and the data that they provide back to Tim and the other engineering folks in the office has been great. Jason, our chief, has been using it for, um, just being able to put patrols in locations where needed as the data shows where the problem times, so it tells us the, the times that we're getting our speeders most. Over road rehab, starting in May. Chinese Temple received some upgraded irrigation landscaping. And we already talked about the in-house pavement management, but we've been doing a lot more paving this past year than I think they have in a very long time. So those were things completed. Initiatives that we're continuing into the next fiscal year are this pavement management program. So as Ruth discussed already, we need to have a long-term strategy. I mean, $153 million worth of work for the next five years. That's if we were to do it all. We really do have to start to identify the specific roads and the why and the how for addressing all of these, all of our streets. We're looking at a regional fats oils and grease program. So we'll be collaborating with our local utility companies. Preliminary engineering for ATP grant funding, so you'll see that on Tuesday. The citywide master drainage plan, I haven't talked much about this. We're looking at about $320,000 to work with the consultant that does a lot of the modeling for the spillway. So we're trying to, I'm thinking it's probably our best thing for bucks since they have the city of Orville modeled already. They've done it in the reverse, so they're looking at when there's, you know, 150, 200,000 CFS flows coming through, what it does backward, backing up into the city. Well, we're looking at high storms. What does it do to get out? How does it go to get out of the city? So I'd really like to use them, but now it's gonna be working maybe with Amy on getting some funding for that specific drainage plan. And what that would tell us is, you know, as we're, as we're experiencing these culvert failures and things like that, the size that these culvert pipes really need to be. Or if, over time, even our open channels, they get sediment and silt buildup. And so they don't have the capacity they once had and should have. So then when we get these storm events, they can't move water the way that they should. So a drainage plan will really help us prioritize the specific drainage problems that we have in town. So outside of roads, there's drainage challenges as well. And we're gonna continue our coordination with Pacific West Builders. Those are the folks who have refined apartments. The, when that apartment complex went in, there was a drain line that went in that's just undersized. So we're gonna be working with them to rectify that situation. Let's see here. Coordinate Lequel Trans on CAPM. That's a given. Where, but last I heard, it was going to be advertising in August and probably awarding in September. And mobilizing, main mobilization for like the main street rehab, I would say, is next spring. But we might see some street pools going in and things like that beforehand, because I expect that they could mobilize, yeah. Developing plans and specs to create, to correct storm drainage issues behind gunshots. This has been, it just consumes resources every time it rains for public work stuff. So getting this rectified and resolved will free them up for other emergencies.
That's gotta happen.
That's when City Hall flooded, that one council meeting? We had that huge, man, that's.
I want to, and I don't know for sure if it's true or not, because I'm still relatively new to the city, but my understanding is that, that the main culvert is clogged with like, almost like a slurry. Like there was some sort of drilling operation that occurred, and it accidentally punctured that culvert. It's 20 feet down, 15 or 20 feet down.
Wow.
So it's not an easy repair to make. So we're looking at ways of bypassing. Anyway, we're gonna, it's, it's something we're gonna look at.
If you let all the gold miners, you still have to say, free digging in this area. They will have it done tomorrow.
Yeah, that's my idea.
We're gonna be working on our design build for new courtyard, so maybe looking at construction starting about September. But until then, working through designs and needs that public work staff have out there. Construction phase on Hewitt Park Phase 2. You know all about that one. Here we go. We're busy. It's 9:10 here. Development of plans and specs, real estate station modernization and emergency bypasses. This is really important also. We don't want to be getting any of our sewer into the local waterways.
That's all in the, the plan you folks approved back with the sewer increases.
We're trying out some new solar lighting. So, you know, us and many other cities are struggling with copper being stolen. And so we've got a few locations, Bedrock Park and Nelson are the two that I think we've identified so far where we're gonna test out some new solar lighting options. So you'll see some new solar lighting going up, and then if those are successful, you'll probably see more of it, more, more options out there. Resurfacing the roadway installation, oh, and installation of pedestrian beacons at Montgomery Roundabout. That's the Montgomery Roundabout project. We're gonna be trying to utilize, so in this coming year, we have RTIS now, we have street light, we've got Spec Link, and so now it's going to be implementing those and utilizing those to really help us focus on specific projects and to be able to track them and also convey them. It's kind of a way of communicating, RTIS especially, great maps and things like that that we can, we can use to keep public informed of what's going on. Implement our Title VI program. We talked a little bit about the Title VI program. We actually have to implement it. It is a program. It's not just a standalone plan. Now it's something that's gonna require training, and it's programmatic. Our public, Westside Public Safety Facility out at Challenger. Norton Ave rehabilitation, that's long overdue. That road is falling apart and has some drainage issues, so we're looking to do that this year. Continuing South Side sidewalk and drainage improvements. I know that one's really important. And then some airport work. Crack seal for north and south tie-down ramps, taxiway L and hanger taxi lanes. The remark of runway 1231, and a runway end identifier light upgrades for runway 20. And then maybe a full overhaul of the FPU. New initiatives. So these are things that we're just now starting. An ADA transition plan for Section 504 compliance. We're also maybe restructuring the public works department. I think we're kind of pulling back from that. I originally was thinking maybe Wade has about 20, 18 staff right now that he manages that are direct reports. I was thinking about maybe splitting off parks and, the parks and trees separating so that he doesn't have to worry about that so much, or he would, and focus only on parks and trees and museums. Bring on another manager to handle the streets and storm drain. After talking with him a little bit about that, I think we're hoping to just bring on a parks lead technician. So we'll put that right now, and I think that might help in the meantime. And if we're still overwhelmed, we'll revisit this in a year from now. Development of the local roadway safety plan. There are certain grants that require that implementation projects be on a local roadway safety plan before we can apply for grant funding for those. That's an HCP, I believe, grant. We do not have a local roadway safety plan, so we can't go after those dollars. However, we, there's an opportunity, I think it actually just came out, a notice funding opportunity, to have the plan developed. So there are some dollars there to have the plan developed, which I think we'll go for this year, so that maybe next round, we can actually use some dollars for implementation of projects that land in that. Begin planning complete streets project on Foothill Boulevard near Ishi Middle School. Yep, so we, we know that there's a lot of middle schoolers that travel that intersection from, basically from 162 down to Ishi. And there's just a lack of sidewalks, and we really wanna make sure that we address that. So that's on the to-do list also, is to start planning that. We have some funding right now for the topo, so we can start seeing if we need to coordinate with utilities. And we should have a, we should at least get layout done, I would say. Safety rambling on Table Mountain Boulevard. This is next to Fish Hatchery. We've been talking about this one, and we'd like to address it this coming year. And then we also are looking at plans and specs to be done for potential construction the following fiscal year for our Foothill storm drain problems that we've got later. It's not an issue yet, but with the way that some of these larger CMP culverts are, have been failing recently, it makes me a little more concerned that the large culvert that runs under Foothill needs to be addressed soon. We don't want to need some coals in Foothill. All right, we would like to also revive the adopt the park program. I, the engineering improvement standards are from 2010, and absolutely need to be updated along with some information in Munich code. We really would like to get some language in the code for roads and how the utilities, when they do cuts in the street for their approach permit, that we're a little bit more stripped on how they put things back. So I know that other bigger cities have really good, strong language, and I'll be looking at those to hopefully bring some around later, and make some changes to our code. I would like to acquire some on-call services for environmental, traffic, mechanical, electrical engineering firms. We don't have this expertise in-house, and we, right now, we have no contracts for any of those items. We do have some on-call services for Civil, Star and Rolls-Anderson, but we, we don't really have anything specific for environmental and for traffic specifically. You know, when we wanna put in stoplights or perform traffic analyses for roundabouts, we, we need someone like that to be able to call on occasionally. We really wanna increase our visitation to museums. So I'll be working with a new curator on this. We also have, there was, this past winter, there was a little bit of piping going on at Argonaut Basin, a drainage, another drainage problem that we'd like to address before it potentially becomes a much larger problem. And then also really just focusing on cleaning up our culverts, things, areas that have been just subject to flooding over the past few years. You might have to help me. Yeah. Okay, thank you. New budget requests. So I apologize for all the words here and not a lot of pictures. But we're looking at a new engineer and training position. So with, with Tim and myself, we could use a hand. So we're looking at an EIT, and also an increase of about 30 grand for a coring machine. A coring machine would allow us to kind of poke a big core in the street so we can see how thick the pavement is and what the base looks like. So those are, run about $8,000. Looking at a new laptop that can run like ArcGIS or some of the more, like the CAD programs that require pretty more extensive modeling. We're looking at increasing our training budget and our annual software budget as well. That we talked about software, means we're paying some annual dollars. For streets, an increase of $175,000 for step increases. We're actually, we're looking at some step increases, but we're really looking at two new, two new positions for operator twos to help us out with both our storm drain challenges and our street challenges. And then the part hit, really honestly, is this increase, the ask for 1.6 million. And that's for our masthead crack sealing asphalt. This is trying to do more work in-house. It's not the full-blown, you know, street strike team that we might want, but it's a good step in that direction. I think it's a good compromise that still allows us to address culverts and park and museum upgrades along with our streets. $140,000 in sidewalk maintenance. We wanna make sure that with our ADA transition plan, we have some dollars that we can put toward maintaining our sidewalks. We have a lot of sidewalks right now that, that trees have really impacted, and we wanna fix the flow lines where the gutters have been raised and now drainage doesn't run the way that it should. We need some dollars for traffic signal and street light maintenance. Storm drain maintenance is a big one. We have, this accounts for, if there's a couple other emergencies. This past year, we had to go ask for additional dollars out of contingency into our storm drain maintenance fund for the Brookdale emergency. And we wanna make sure that we are, we're, we've got some dollars budgeted because I think every, every winter, we're gonna experience a little bit of that. Radar feedback signs. Those have been working so well. We would love to get more. And then also just some striping improvements around town. Field tablets, training still, weed abatement, and equipment. So the equipment is the big one. We're looking at a trailer that we need, a skid steer, like a 10-wheeler, and a paper trailer is the ask in order to kind of just keep moving with the streets, the streets crew work. Parks and trees. So we're looking for an increase of $100,000 for, that's actually less now. It's, well, it's more like $80,000 for the park lead tech position. So we're not looking at that tree manager, the manager position anymore, but we are looking at that tech position. An increase of $450,000 for fuel, graffiti and vandalism, the part lighting in the parks, downtown benches and planters, if we want to, if we want to do that. Outside services for the convention center, Bedrock Park, Phase 1. These are dollars to help pay for the designs for those. And additional software expenses here for parks and trees, the training for staff. Museums, we're looking at roofing needed for both Pioneer and Bolt museums. We wanna increase our advertising because we do want more visitation. There's some office expenses here, other supplies. There really was Hannah, who Hannah, she had a $5,000 budget. So we want to let this new curator come on with a little bit more resources to help her do her job well, to help her to succeed. Okay, sewer department. So this is an increase of about $20,000 for, that should be, that should say three. There are three collector-one positions that we would like to fund as collector-two positions. This is consistent with how the streets is funded as well. All the streets positions are funded as operator-twos.
And once they go from like entry level to journey level, that's typically from a one to a two?
And so we're looking at that increase of $70,000 for the fog program, building maintenance. This is like our, our real estate maintenance. Equipment maintenance for pump replacement and parts. Maintenance of sewer lines, our pipe couplings, vanhull castings, root foaming, about $15,000 for that. Vehicle maintenance and the other supplies, plus the CMMS software. This, this first implementation was $50,000. So it was $25,000 to implement and $25,000 for the annual renewal. So that, that will go down. The implementation will be done, and then it'll be 12, 12 to 13,000 that will be split between the public works departments. And then for the airport, an increase of $150,000. So they're looking for advertising, about $1,000 to advertise new air, but mostly this is for building maintenance. Their new crack sealing, project match, lighting maintenance, taxiway maintenance, training and some outside services. And then also for that, yeah, for that public safety building. That's where the dollars will hit for Westside Public Safety Building. Okay. And I think that's it for public works. Any questions?
It's a lot, huh?
It's a lot, certainly. And I hate to add to the list, but one of the buildings we need to not forget is the Gerdler Building on Broadrick Avenue, because that's our building. And I know we have some challenges in it, so.
Is it something that needs to go on that capital improvement list? Or is it something that needs to be addressed this coming year?
I'd say, well, it needs to go.
On the list.
It goes on the list. It's, it's not being habitable at this point.
Okay. I'll have a, I'll set up a meeting so we can go through that.
There's supposed to be an engineer doing something on it.
That was, that's the building we, yeah.
We haven't touched on, we haven't.
Yeah, well, it's the one over by, by the Bolt Museum. We were driving around it one day. I started, I think I started telling you about it, but then we, we got to the Bolt Museum, it was like right around the corner.
The other quick question I have is on your increased fuel cost. Is that because we're using a different system, or what's going on with that?
I think it's primarily because we have more staff now.
Okay.
And so they're using it. And then also, we switched from, we migrated to Dawson Oil. We started running into issues with our in-house.
Tank.
Tank. Yep, it was really not the tank, so it was the, I think the equipment they achieved.
The system itself kind of just died over time.
The system itself kind of just died over time. And it was, it's a 40-year-old system on some, so.
Right.
We have some quotes to repair. We have a couple of different options we can do there. It's either repair the one that's out of the courtyard or close that permit with Beuk County Air Quality Management District. It'll be about 23 grand to rehab it, to bring in all new, new software with IT to fix it up. And so if we're going to use it for another two, two and a half years maybe, but probably migrate to the new courtyard, it might be worth it because the portable tanks are about $4,000 a month. So it's just, it probably would pay for itself.
And the air quality permit, I keep the permit in hand before you have to ask for a new one because the new ones are much more restrictive. So keep the old one.
Yes.
And personally, I'd like to see that tank moved to the new courtyard because that has been a valuable asset for us to have. And I don't know what the numbers are, but I, I can understand Dawson's increased cost. And then, you're right, it is an old system, but it served.
The tank is good. It's the fuel master, the, it was, it, the company.
It's the kiosk, the kiosk machine.
Okay, thank you.
And the next, like, there's four or five more slides. Ultimately, it's a summary, which is kind of a summary of all the ask, which we don't need to. I think it's more important, does anyone have any, I know some of you are well beyond your time with us today. Anything you want us that wasn't on here, like areas of focus?
I already said at the beginning.
Yep.
Support for staff.
Yep. As you can see, I think, public works, I mean, all the departments could use more staff. The public works, I mean, we have two engineers now, which is fantastic. But you can see all these projects, you can see that we absolutely need, right? Another, I think the EIT would be an economical and affordable way of doing that. No? Any other priorities, I think, of roads, infrastructure?
Yeah.
Support staff. I think it's that simple. It's just hard to get that.
Yeah.
Yeah, roads, you know, like we were talking about yesterday, all the aesthetic stuff, like the visual stuff, right?
Yeah.
And, you know, for us, I know I can only speak with absolute confidence about what I receive complaints about, and it's blight, it's carts, it's unhoused, it's roads and roads and more roads. And so I think, you know, Alyssa was talking about, you know, when I requested to develop the dedicated pavement management team, you know, you know, Rome was a built-in-a-day.
Yep.
So anything's better than nothing. And obviously, we could clearly see that far more has been put into infrastructure and roads in the last couple of years than it was previously. So it's, there's a huge.
Previously combined.
Yeah.
Previously combined, yeah.
Twelve years combined.
Yeah.
They're doing it.
You've been reading my post. And I know you, I know you think you're being funny, but you know, but you always do that. You have like, you know, passive aggressive ways of saying, you read my post, but that's fine. Yeah, but it's fine. It's true.
Read me both.
Is it not true, though?
What?
All the previous years combined?
Combined.
Oh, yes.
Yes. It's not come from any post, it's fact.
Yeah, it is. So, all right. So the reality is we have, we have, we're getting a lot of stuff done. So the council's been, you know, really active in that. And, and so with what Alyssa's proposing is just a fantastic amount of work that we could get done, and it's really awesome, you know? So that's, I mean, you know, all the rest of it, the department seemed healthy, you know, doing well, you know? I wish we had $20 million more to give each one.
I'll just, I'll just say a summary of some of this. We don't have to look at the list, we've already seen it, but, but. Sorry, I was actually waiting for the gunshot. Like staffing 820,000, but we're going to have some savings because we convert from the contracts to employees. But I mean, and a lot of that is fire. So really, it's 500,000 fire. So it's not a lot of new staff that's been added. It's only really a few positions. The projects, 1.3 million. Plus this slide, 6.4 million. Yeah. So that's, you know, I mean, it's, the numbers are, it's, I don't know. Yeah, it's, it's a lot. You add that to the roads, you add that, it's.
I think it's all good stuff. It's just got to keep going.
It is, and it's just hard, years of deferrals makes it hard to catch up in a year or two years or three years or five years or 10 years.
And Mother Nature seems to remind us about our grain pipes.
Yes, I mean, the storm drains have been a lightning, it's been a lightning.
Sixties. Education.
I need to just do a full inventory of corrugated metal pipes and places.
I think we're, we're probably officially, officially done. I know, Scott, you got to go.
Yeah, I'm going to be late.
Okay. It's, we're returning back to regular session, and the next meeting will be held.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, April 15. 15th at 4:00 PM.
Yep.
We are adjourned.